Hi, I'm Nadia Colmes, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students. That includes children in preschool through adults in our workforce program.
I'm Henry Shape Washington, the Board Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America, and our team is made of more than 24,000 people working at nearly 250 sites across the county.
Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 P.M. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to email or meet with any of our board members and follow our district on social media. Board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum Cable Channel 635 and Frontier Cable Channel 32. Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They are posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsboroughschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we're making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting for January 10, 2023, is called to order. Member Washington will now lead us in a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year to everyone. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you, Member Washington. We have no withdrawn items today. I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Gray. Any discussion? And it passes unanimously. Let the record reflect that all board members are present today. We have three sets of minutes to be approved today. November 15, 2022, School Board Workshop; December 6, 2022, School Board Recognition; December 13, 2022, School Board Meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Vaughn, and I have a second by Member Gray. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we're a nonpartisan board who believe that all children can be empowered to learn, to succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. To pave the way for efficient and effective agenda statements and/or questions, board members will have three minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterward, the superintendent can respond. If you have further questions, you're asked to get back into the queue. Member Washington will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon meeting, let me quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed caption on webcast, on cable TV, and on video monitors there are in the auditorium. It also can be viewed with closed caption in the online archive.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Washington. We have two items scheduled for time certain. That's 5:01 in public hearing and 5:00 in committee.
And before we begin our recognitions, proclamations, I just wanted to wish the board members a happy new year and just say I'm looking forward to the coming year. And Superintendent Davis, I know in the coming year, we are going to be facing many, many challenges, and I just want to say that I know we all value each other, we all value our opinions, and we're going to often agree and often disagree, and I just think it's very important that we continue working so well as we have in the past, teamwork, and make sure that we continue to work collaboratively. So I look forward to another wonderful year with all of you, and welcome, Member Rendon, your second official meeting. So now we will begin with today with our adoption of proclamation of Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Member Gray will be highlighting this proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to read the proclamation. It is about four paragraphs, and then I want to recognize our members of our human trafficking team openly. So whereas human trafficking affects as many as 24.9 million worldwide, including children who are trafficked for labor and sexual exploitation, and whereas, according to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, Florida ranks third in the nation for the number of reported cases of human trafficking, and the average age of trafficked youth is 11 to 13 years old. Tampa, Florida, is the number-one metropolitan city in the nation that has human trafficking data. Very worrisome. Whereas Hillsborough County public school teachers, support staff, administrators, school resource officers, parents, and community stakeholders play a critical role in recognizing potential human trafficking and in helping potential victims access specialized services. And whereas the School Board of Hillsborough County recognizes the risks, factors of vulnerable youth, and chooses to educate students and the community about the warning signs of human trafficking, and lastly, now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Hillsborough County, in partnership with the City of Tampa and the Hillsborough County Sheriff Office, will take an advocate's role to communicate information to its stakeholders so that all students and the community vigilantly identify and report human trafficking, whereby sending a strong message that the district will not tolerate any form of this crime. To this end, by definition, and this is very brief, human trafficking is the unlawful practice involving our youth who become victims through the use of force, fraud, or coercion, all of which is accelerated through students' use of online devices. For almost six years, our Human Trafficking Committee, which will stand shortly, have been working in earnest to bring awareness to school principals, parents, and communities. Hillsborough County Public School is grateful for the many partners, inclusive is the board, in this huge effort, from Mayor Castor's office to the Sheriff Chad Cronister's office, from the No More Foundation, the Florida Alliance of Human Trafficking, and the Paving Your Way Foundation, plus many, many other agencies and individuals. Today, I would like to follow leaders to be recognized, and if they would stand accordingly. I am hoping that from Sheriff Chad Cronister's office, Colonel Anthony Morris has been here, but I didn't see him yet, so he might come in shortly. From Attorney General Ashley Moody's office, Robin Metcalf, she could not come from Tallahassee today, but she's part of our committee. From the No More Foundation, Dottie Groover Skipper, if you'll stand, and Dottie just won the Polaris Award for Central Florida for human trafficking, very outstanding community partner. From our Hillsborough County Public School staff, Ashley Cappucci, she educated over 24,000 teachers in human trafficking strategies. And Ashley, you're back there? Okay, come on up here, you're going to have a picture in a minute. From Superintendent Davis, who was allowing the entire student body and the schools to take part in an awareness campaign, we thank you. From Paving the Way Foundation, Jan Edwards, thank you, Jan. From our principal's leading awareness campaign, Ms. Denise Savino of Leonard High School. From our Hillsborough County PTA, Amy Marie Granger, and, oh, you're all here, good. From our Florida Attorney General Ashley Moody, oh, that's right, Robin could not show up. From our Hillsborough County Public Adult Education, Drucey Diaz Phillips, but she is not feeling right right now, she has a cold, so she did not come. An actual testimonial, Connie Wise, she'll be here shortly for our panel. Angela Fullwood from Family and Community Engagement, better known as FACE. Eric Bowles, that's spelled B-O-L-E-S, Eric, that is our immigration attorney and who does a lot of the cases of human trafficking at this time, and thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board, for allowing the time. We're going to take a photo. If you all come up in the front, right in front of the board, and we'll take a picture with the board members. And I thought, Ms. Cappucci, did you have that sign? Because I want you to go ahead and hold it. No? Okay. All right. Looking to just stand? Yeah. Take a photo, and Aaron?
Go right in front of there. I guess I'll just move. Wait. In the circle. All right. Everyone ready? Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Awesome. Give her a big hand.
I need a motion and a second to approve the Human Trafficking Awareness Month, January I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Perez. Any discussion? Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. And thank you, Member Gray, and thank you to the entire human trafficking panel and everything that you've been doing for six years. This is such an important, important, you know, topic. It's so important for our community and our parents and our children to know about this. So thank you for all the work. We will now move on to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive response to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and keep our board informed about the responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here. However, it is requested when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a board member or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed. Our stability policy is in place. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. This afternoon, each speaker will have two minutes. Remember that your two minutes start when you begin speaking. When there are 30 seconds left, you will see a yellow light on the lectern, a red light and a chime will indicate when your time is up. I'll now call up the first speakers. I think we have, okay.
Good evening. Paula Castano, Hillsborough Public School Advocates. Our organization wants fully funded traditional public schools in Florida. We work with a coach and three national nonprofits, including Jitu Brown, a national director of a coalition from Black and Brown communities. There will be lots of people talking about boundaries. It's important to note, this is part of a bigger picture, privatization of public schools. The Brown and Black communities are shuttered when their schools are abandoned. We need to support more of these underperforming schools. That's a number-one sign of privatization. Thank you for increasing, Board, the community engagement at the evening meetings. Can they ask questions verbally instead of on paper? But what is also lost in this conversation is teachers with no raises for two years. That's the number-two warning sign, Addison, of privatization. Legislation allowing class size averaging, that's the number-three warning sign of privatization. There are eight other warning signs that I won't have time in my minute left to address, but what I do want to say is schools are always dismantled first in minority communities. So Hillsborough Public School Advocates ask, number one specifically, how and when will these schools be repurposed so the state cannot seize these schools under Florida statute 1002.33? Number two, Board and Addison, we ask that you brainstorm, how will you support future Black and Brown community schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Me encantaría verlos dicho en inglés, pero...
I would have loved to say it in English, but I'm here speaking.
Okay. Mi nombre es Magaly Reyes, y estoy aquí hoy para pedir a esta eficiente junta escolar que eliminen completamente de su proyecto de límites el escenario número tres que involucra el cierre de escuelas en nuestro condado. En especial...
My name is Magaly Reyes, and I'm here to ask you to... I'm here to ask you to eliminate the project for scenario number three that involves Morgan Woods.
En especial la escuela de mi nieto, Alejandro Ramírez, cursa el cuarto grado y ama su escuela.
This is my grandson's school, and he loves his school.
He's sido maestra voluntaria en esta escuela y puedo garantizar con ejemplos vividos que es una escuela magnífica donde sus alumnos son afortunados de tenerla y ellos se esfuerzan diariamente por mantener la capacidad de aprendizaje de estos alumnos. La prueba es que mi nieto es un niño gifted.
I've been a volunteer teacher at Morgan Woods, and I can tell you from firsthand experience that it's a wonderful school that has lifted all students, and thankfully to Morgan Woods, my grandson is a gifted student.
En el año 2020 nos azotó el COVID. Eso desvinculó a los alumnos de la escuela y de los maestros. En el caso de mi nieto hicimos las clases, yo lo ayudé para proteger su salud desde la casa haciendo las clases y learning.
In 2020, we obviously experienced the pandemic, and we had to help my grandson work from home.
Okay. Sabemos todos que esto trajo como consecuencia que daños colaterales.
Know that there was consequences academically to all students.
Muchos alumnos cuando regresaron a la escuela ya no volvieron a esas escuelas porque se tuvieron que mudar, problemas económicos...
A lot of them didn't return because of financial reasons and...
Problemas económicos. Yo me pregunto, le pregunto al distrito escolar, proponer escenarios límites en los que los más afectados sean nuestros estudiantes sería la solución?
So I'm asking, is it a solution for the scenario to eliminate schools where these schools...
No, porque ellos han sido muy afectados y aún se recuperan de aquel desastre.
They are just now recuperating and have been very affected by the disaster.
No, porque esta interrupción de nuevo sería una segunda pandemia.
It would be a second pandemic if you get rid of Morgan Woods.
Tengo mucha fe en que ustedes estructuren o reestructuren su proyecto y le digan no al cierre de escuelas.
And please say no to closing Morgan Woods.
Yo abogo en nombre de toda la comunidad de Morgan Woods para que esta min satisfacción no cierren las escuelas, por favor.
Please don't close Morgan Woods. Thank you, that was a summary.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the translation as well. Next speaker, please.
At eight years old, I lost my innocence. The perpetrator was an older child. It was not consensual. The individual was evangelical about his desires because a younger brother of mine came to me with request. And I've known that brother is someone who we've had talks with, and he was approached My concern today is that the effort to be able to represent the whole community is admirable, but what about the innocent? I'm speaking about the introduction of curriculum and the way that it's actually applied. carnal knowledge led me through an odyssey that lasted for 20 years. I'll be in touch with you by email and request the opportunity to be able to discuss further about what your plans will be to be able to protect the innocent.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Dubois, the CEO of Hillsborough Public School Advocates. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for offering additional opportunities to hear stances and ask questions about the boundary changes. As you can imagine, this is a passionate topic for many as it causes major upheaval and change, but it is so important for us to understand this is part of a bigger picture, privatizing education. Let's take a quick look at some history. Florida has dropped from 23rd to 45th nationally in education funding in just 15 short years. Florida is at an embarrassing 48th nationally in teacher pay, all while Hillsborough County is the seventh-largest district in the country, exacerbating these funding challenges. But many of my friends and community members ask, are property values continue to go up? Are taxes rise? How is this possible? This money goes to Tallahassee and is allocated back in a per-pupil funding calculation. This equation continues to be redone and not in favor of our students. At the root of it, boundary changes, closing schools, repurposing does one thing, further drives the inequity and accessibility to a quality education, especially for our Latinx and African-American families. My ask is twofold. This board needs to continue to dive into the data, as you have, behind the boundary change scenarios to make an educated decision. And the plans for repurposing buildings, do they follow statute? Are these plans opening Pandora's box to allow for privatizers to come in and take over our property? For all parents here and watching at home, do your research and see that this is just one arrow in the quiver of state officials trying to take away our neighborhood schools and privatize education. We need to stand together. Let's take back public education for the entire public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Danielle Kachi. I'm a mom of a soon-to-be kindergartner, and I'm urging you to keep my neighborhood in the Grady, Coleman, and Plant District. I've been absolutely worried sick over the past few weeks as to what my child's future will look like. As a Plant graduate myself, I worked hard to buy my own home 12 years ago in the North Bon Air Westshore Palms area north of Kennedy. Before I was... Before I was married, before I had a child, made all of these decisions with the intent that I one day wanted my family to stay in this community and have my daughter follow in the same path. I understand that there are concerns about finances and overcrowding, but moving our children in the north of Kennedy area, a working-class, diverse neighborhood, will not fix these problems. And paying $567,000 for this experimental flawed study at the expense of our kids and taxpayers is unacceptable. Scenario two and three are destructive to our children's education, decrease diversity in schools, and would negatively impact mental health. I strongly urge you to keep the Coleman Plant boundaries as is for my daughter and for our community. Please reject scenarios two and three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, dear Honorable Sir and Madam of School Board. My name is Emma Roji from North Bon Air, north of Kennedy in South Tampa. I'm here today to send a clear and loud message that our neighbor are saying no to scenario two and three of the boundary analysis. As a scenario two and three will have catastrophic impact on our neighborhood and the current school system, Grady Elementary, Coleman Middle, and Plant High. And like all of my neighbors, we have planned to send our kids to those schools for many years. But scenario two and three will send our lives and years of planning down to a destructive path, which is not acceptable. Please go with scenario one. Leave our schools' choices as they are. Listen to our voice of reason and our pleas. Together, we can build a strong and diverse school district. I have two sons. My older one, 16-year-old, goes to Plant High School and he's currently a varsity in Plant Rowing Crew. He is also a straight A student and plan to go to a top engineering college after he graduated from Plant. But his dream will likely to be cut short. If scenario two and three happens, then he would be forced to go to a C-rated Jefferson. So I plead to you, please, vote for scenario two and three will destroy a lot of families' dreams on education and lives. And it causes irreparable harm to the entire community and the school district. Please vote on scenario one and keep the South Tampa school intact and make it stronger and more diverse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
First thing, thank you for this forum. Wish we could have more town hall meetings in the District Two... Oh, excuse me. My name is Chris Blackburn, down in the North Bon Air as well. We call this hearing complaint, not going to help us. Solutions. Solutions for our children. My child, 10-year-old, going into middle school. Very concerned about scenario two and scenario three. I didn't grow up in the great state of Florida, Brandon, now over and towards the South Tampa area. So my child can have a better education. And this is what it's about, our children, our education. My son is so unfortunate to be in a gifted program. To send him to another school that does not have these programs, unacceptable. I've paid my dues. I've invested in the Grady Elementary. I'll continue to invest in the Coleman. And I'll continue to invest in Plant. That's where we want to be. That's why we moved here. We don't want to be anywhere else. And it's no knock on Pierce, no knock on Jefferson. Those schools, specifically Pierce, need your help as elected officials to bring them up the standards. Elected officials, up to standards. Superintendent Davis commented as, "We're not going to follow policy. We're going to do as we do." Well, I'm sorry if I remember, most companies and jobs have policies for a reason and to be followed, not, "We're just going to do what we want to do." The other gentleman, I believe Mr. Fark, has said, quote, "As we want to send your children to a better school or one as good." This won't be the case in scenario two or three. I thank you again. Please more town halls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And all of you are welcome to clap, but it does make it difficult for us to hear up here. Just so you know, when you're clapping very loudly, I'm missing some of the comments. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerald Boyle and I have a son who is a fifth grader at Grady Elementary and a daughter who is in eighth grade at Coleman Middle School. They will be going to Coleman Middle School and Plant High School respectively, or at least scheduled to. My daughter has even filled out her course schedule for next year. I am joined by my fellow community members from Westshore Palms and North Bon Air. We don't live in million-dollar homes. We chose that neighborhood for its diversity, its affordability, and because it was zoned for Plant, Coleman, and Grady. Next year, a handful of children from our neighborhood will be forced to attend significantly lower-rated schools if scenario two or three are approved. Is this small number of children going to solve the overutilization problems at Plant High School or at Coleman? Obviously not. I believe this is... I believe our community is being targeted because it is the community with the lowest average median income and the greatest diverse minority representation within the Plant feeder district. And I believe this is gentrification. Much wealthier and ethnically homogeneous communities that are twice as far from Plant High School than our community have been untouched by these scenarios. The Equal Educational Opportunities Act of 1974 prohibits the school district from assigning children to another school if it results in greater segregation. This is exactly what will happen if the Plant feeder district... in the Plant feeder district if scenarios two or three are chosen. I ask this Board to exclude the Bon Air and Westshore Palms communities from scenarios two and three, and approve scenario one and take the savings that they would incur and develop and fund those underperforming schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Leann Clum, Glisten, Tampa Bay. I'm here to support the state-mandated comprehensive sex education. And it's important to address this subject with facts and data, not inflammatory, nonsensical language like grooming, indoctrinating, sexualizing. Here's what we know. According to the CDC 2019 YRBS, 52% of Florida's high school seniors reported having sex. And I think we're all in agreement that teenagers should not be having sex. Well, we know that a comprehensive sex education helps curb those numbers and also curb numbers for STIs, HIV, pregnancy, dating violence, and even human trafficking. Research shows that students who receive quality sexual health education are much more likely to delay sexual initiation and to use protection when they do have sex. Numerous studies have shown that abstinence-only education is ineffective and harmful. The governor says this is the free state of Florida. And to that end, if a family doesn't want their child to get this vital information, doesn't want their child to understand their changing body, how to avoid dating violence and human trafficking, how to avoid lifelong consequences, they are free to opt out. But what they should not be free to do is deny this vital, maybe even life-saving education for other people's children. What they also should not be free to do is to use their argument against this curriculum as an opportunity to attack, demonize, and dehumanize an entire group of children under the guise of Christianity. This is a group of children who suffer, whose struggles are so dire that nearly half of them will attempt suicide. And that is certainly not what Jesus would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Menzer. Five years ago, my job transferred me from Virginia down to Florida. While we were moving down, we looked to South Tampa for the schools to move into and finish raising our family here. We made a significant financial investment, far beyond what we would be able to. And we made those sacrifices to be able to have our children in these schools and develop our community relationships as we have. During the five years we've been here, the schools in our neighborhood, Grady, Coleman, and Plant, have all improved. They were already good schools prior to that. Grady is the number-one rated elementary school in Hillsborough County. And that is thanks to the teachers and faculty and staff and their effort. It is also a result of the engagement from the parents and families. Our schools enjoy a very tight network of families and we depend on that to watch out for our kids in school, outside of school, at school events. And our community is tight like that. On the evening of December 13th, I was shocked to learn the information of the boundary assessment and the scenarios that were put forward. And when 2023 school year starts, I will have a child in elementary, middle, and high school. I'll be affected. Each of my children will be affected, especially my high school child, if scenarios two or three are approved. And the time since then, I've learned that there's no public notice, no hearings, no public input. And the assessment was very unprofessional, in my opinion. A company does not appear to me, from my research, to be qualified to be making any recommendations in Florida for this topic. So if passed, I do feel that this would be a betrayal by elected and appointed government officials to the families and to the community, even families that don't have children or got to see significant property decline. So I ask that you leave as is.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Both scenario one only.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to get back on track. I know some of the names were kind of out of order, so we're going to be with Mr. Clutho. You'll be next. And then we'll get back on track with all public comments. Okay?
Lord Clutho, if you were smart, you would be calling the names from up there on the Board. It's ridiculous the way you're doing this. And you know it's sad that all these people here aren't calling for the school system to be making high performance, passive solar buildings so that their children could be educated in these good, healthy buildings. Doggone shame. Here's this article. "In the Owl Tree: Collateral Victims." Are you putting out the poison? It's killing the birds? And I think you probably think that with your stupid buildings, you're saved because a big headline last year, "Fusion Could Be Climate and Energy Game-Changer." Scientists announce big breakthrough in fusion energy. You know, that's sun on Earth. Well, it's up there in the sky. That's pie in the sky. It won't save you. Want to phase out fossil fuels? We must fundamentally change our buildings. Without energy-efficient buildings, electricity demand will increase dramatically in the winter. Well, you know, for over 30 years, I've been giving you the science of high-performance passive solar building. And you fools just keep ignoring it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
For the folks who asked, I'm number 11. Hi, my name is Tim McGahey and I've met several of you over the past few days as you've been beginning your community engagement. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for that and thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you here. I'm just asking that as you go through this boundary process, that you keep a critical eye on the data that's being presented to you. Last night, we had heard, for example, that scenario one had a 5% more adverse feeder pattern. But the numbers that were behind that were effectively the size of a small neighborhood. And that neighborhood may not agree that that's an adverse pattern, you know, that they follow through those schools. So, you know, just in general, please keep a critical eye. Some of the other speakers have mentioned the future use of these facilities. I want to make sure that we don't lose those in the future. And then one of my big concerns, frankly, is the financial numbers that back all this up. We have not seen in the past that operational cost benefits that have been advertised end up being the benefits that are delivered. So as we're seeing these numbers that are passed around, I really want to make sure we're sharing all those numbers with the community because the community does want to see them and we do want to see them with that same critical eye that I hope that you're all approaching them with. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Patricia Hall. While I agree that the boundary drama is an essential action the Board must take, there are historical facts unknown to many. Number one, top priorities should be given to families and children displaced when magnet schools were created in the early 1990s. These magnet middle schools, Stewart, Orange Grove, Young, Farrell, and Franklin, left communities with middle school deserts so these children were bused miles away to Madison and McLean Middle School. Madison should now have community children overflowing from Coleman, one and a quarter miles away from Coleman, not send Coleman children seven miles north to Pierce. Just elementary can become a middle school without much renovation. Number two, Davis Island High School children should go closer to home, to Blake. Number three, housing patterns have changed drastically in the county. When houses were purchased to be in certain boundary areas, there was no guarantee that it was for a lifetime. Little-known fact, 88% of Hillsborough County grads do not complete four-year college degrees. Are you aware that our nasty, cruel governor is right about one thing? Workforce development. Jefferson High School's an international studies magnet. Welding is offered at all levels and Jefferson grads can earn $90,000 to $100,000 a year upon graduation. Underwater welders earn even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Brad Smith. I am a PTA Vice President at the number-one A-plus rated Grady Elementary School for the past six years, including this year. I also run our PTA website. I am on campus usually every day, helping work with the teachers and staff. My concerns are for the students, including my son, in the North Bon Air and Westshore Palms areas. The proposed changes in scenarios two and three will rob them of their future educational and economic opportunities and shatter their dreams for the future. By moving them from an A-plus school to C-minus school system, these students will fall behind students from Plant High School in competing for college admissions and other higher educational institutions limiting their future earnings and other financial opportunities as adults. These affected areas are currently the most racial and economically diverse segment of the student population currently in the Plant High School district. And both scenarios two and three will directly increase and promote more racial and economic disparities in these Hillsborough County public school communities. My son is a straight A Principal's Honor Roll student and National Elementary School Honor Society member that will be directly harmed by this rezoning of the North Bon Air and Westshore Palms areas. Please exclude North Bon Air and Westshore Palm areas. Please exclude North Bonner and West Shore Palm areas from scenarios two and three. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Should be Michelle Smith? Danielle Eichman? Oh, okay.
My name is Danielle Eichman, and the Carrollwood-Kate Initiative is back again. We are happy to be here, and we're looking forward to the final boundary analysis proposal. In September, you asked a community to attend the online town hall meetings for the boundary analysis, and many did. During the meetings, question six asked, "Are there any concerns you would like to share around specific schools?" Carrollwood Elementary School was the second most-mentioned school in our district. Another school that was mentioned enough times to make the top 10 list is our current-zoned middle school. This is more proof that our community is concerned in showing up to support these changes. As WXY Studio receives feedback from the community and continues to analyze the current school boundaries, it is very clear that transitioning Carrollwood to a K-8 meets all of the elements at our priority, including distance to school, assignment stability, and preserving feeder patterns. We are very appreciative of your time and for allowing us the opportunity to have our voices heard. You will hear next from one of our amazing teachers, who is also a Carrollwood parent and an active member of our Carrollwood community. Please listen to our plea and vote yes so that we can transition our wonderful elementary school into a K-8 next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Cavalier.
My name is Sarah Cavalieri, and I am here to speak to you today as a proud teacher at Carrollwood Elementary, but even more importantly, I am a proud Carrollwood Elementary parent. My children are in first and fourth grade. My husband and I love our community in Carrollwood as well as our school, and as my daughter nears the end of her elementary years, like many Carrollwood parents, we are nervous about our options for middle school. I want to thank you for hearing the concerns of many Carrollwood parents and for including Carrollwood K-8 as a possibility in the boundary changes. Making Carrollwood a K-8 school would ease a lot of our stress in our family. As a third-grade teacher at Carrollwood Elementary, I'm excited about the possibility of our school transitioning to a K-8. Before teaching at Carrollwood, I spent nine years teaching at a K-8 school in Pinellas County. I loved the sense of community that our school had, and I loved getting to see my former students on campus as they progressed throughout their school years. Nothing breaks my heart more than so many of our students continually leaving Carrollwood for private and charter schools before their elementary years are over. As a parent, I know what a difficult decision this can be for families. I am certified and have taught both middle grades, math and social studies, and I am hopeful that my experience can be beneficial to Carrollwood as we transition to a K-8 school. I ask that you please keep Carrollwood K-8 in mind as you are making decisions about school boundaries for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Guilherme Barati. I have a daughter attending Grady and a son that will soon join the public schools, and I want to talk about the diversity issues with the proposed boundary changes. Your website talks about celebrating diversity, yet North Bonner and West Palms, that bring most of the diversity to the South Tampa schools, are being considered to be removed from those schools. You talk about having community engagement during the process of rebounding the schools, yet we had no real engagement. Many people did not know about this process until three days ago. You talked about keeping students together through the feeder pattern, creating stability and a sense of community, yet North Bonner and West Palm feeder pattern will shuffle kids throughout different parts of the city, breaking completely their cycle of friends and the community they belong to. You talked about savings, yet no information has been provided to the community or the board where exactly those savings will come from and how those savings will help improve the schools that need helping. To our neighborhoods of North Bonner and West Palms, option one, scenario one, is the only accepted scenario that would keep our community in A-rated schools. Moving that area to lower graded schools would affect our students and would affect the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss?
My name is Amy Weiss. I'm a mother, a Tampa resident and a physician who is board-certified in pediatrics and adolescent medicine. I am an associate professor and chief of the Division of Adolescent and Young Adult Medicine at USF. I am here to speak again in support of comprehensive, medically accurate and research-based sexual health education. I ask that you also read my op-ed published earlier today in the Tampa Bay Times. Today, I want to share with you two memorable patient encounters that demonstrate the need for comprehensive sex education in our community. Several years ago, a 16-year-old girl came in for an HIV test and tested positive. She was concerned about a potential recent exposure to HIV from a transactional sexual encounter in which she was trying to earn money to pay for her grandfather's diabetes medications. However, she had contracted HIV from a long-term older partner. This patient did not have an adequate understanding of how HIV is spread and the need for regular testing. More recently, a 13-year-old girl came in for birth control and tested positive for pregnancy. She did not understand that the pull-out method is not effective for pregnancy prevention. Research shows that comprehensive sex education programs result in many positive outcomes, including a delay in initiation of sex and reduction in frequency and number of sexual partners, and an increase in condom use. Some studies have even shown a decrease in truancy and an improvement in academic performance among youth who receive sex ed. While abstinence is effective when practiced, research has demonstrated that abstinence-based or abstinence-only until marriage programs are ineffective at delaying initiation of sexual intercourse. As a pediatrician who specializes in the care of adolescents and young adults, I urge you to continue to support the current comprehensive, medically accurate and well-designed curriculum when you meet on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tatia Nicole. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a senior at HP Plant High School. I'm here to speak as a leader and an advocate for my peers in the Hillsborough County public school system and to support the protection of every student's right to comprehensive sexual health education and resources. Educating Hillsborough County students on comprehensive sexual education gives them the tools they need to prevent STDs or HIV and unplanned pregnancies. It teaches them to understand their bodies and teaches them their own personal boundaries, which also helps to prevent dating violence, sexual assault and predators. Organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics have repeatedly promoted that kids who receive comprehensive sex education are safer from grooming and child abuse, not the other way around. There's nothing taboo about understanding your body and how to take care of every aspect of it, and it's time to get rid of the stigma that surrounds comprehensive sex education. Sexual health is a part of our overall health regarding to an individual's anatomy, and every student should be educated about this subject and have access to comprehensive sex education equally across all demographics in Hillsborough County. I've been fortunate enough to have parents who have had these conversations with me and taught me how to respect and take care of my body, but not all students have had access to parental guidance like I did. Having additional resources in the curriculum, such as teen connect, also provides a safe space for students to ask questions, read blog entries and look through a resource index that provides information about all things regarding sexual health through a student-led website. Incorporating a relatable and familiar source of information that is powered by students just like themselves to the curriculum is an incredible choice because it provides the students with some common ground and a trusted source of information they can rely on. It is imperative that we continue to incorporate this valuable information into the curriculum of Hillsborough County because the knowledge and understanding of how an individual's body works and how to take care of it is not corrupting students, but rather helping to cultivate a more well-rounded and adjusted young adult who will then in turn become a healthy and thriving member of society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Julie Gebhardt, and I just have a few questions for you about the sex ed curriculum. First of all, why is Planned Parenthood, an organization that fights against abstinence-based curriculum, a partner in the creation of our curriculum? Florida Statute 1,0346 requires that it is an abstinence-based curriculum. Second, why will the public hearing Thursday not be recorded or livestreamed? This is possibly the single most important issue for the public, big decision for the school board. Why are we not allowing the public to see this, especially since it's 1 to 4 o'clock, which many people can't come? Why were we not allowed to share videos from the curriculum as evidence at the public hearing? This is evidence. This needs to be viewed by all of you. You need to know what's in the curriculum. Then, will you allow the board representatives that we have elected the freedom to speak, or will you do what I've seen you do many times before and call the question with board members still in the queue? This is disrespectful not only to your fellow board members, but also to the people who voted for them and put them in position to represent us. You're disallowing them from being representatives of us. Then, why are you teaching the seventh graders that they can consent to sex within adult? This is in the seventh grade sex ed curriculum. This is not an additional video. This is what was shown to every seventh grader. It's in Lesson Four, and the video is called Understanding Sexual Consent and the Law. It's an amazed.org video. It shows a minor 15-year-old brace-faced boy engaging in sex with a woman, and then it basically shows her as the victim in the scenario. Okay? This is a slippery slope. Do you know that consent is the language of traffickers? They know how to manipulate young people into consent. They use that to their advantage, so we need to be really careful what we're putting in front of them. There are multiple other direct violations of the law in this curriculum that we will address Thursday.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you so much.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name's Jill McCracken, and I'm a professor at the University of South Florida. I have been doing research on prostitution and trafficking in the sex industry for 20 years, and I'm also a sexuality educator and have been for a decade. In the past few years, I've had the opportunity to work with youth who have been trafficked, and I have been able to facilitate a sexual health education program with them. And I'm here today to speak about the trafficking proclamation that you all passed, but also because I'm not able to be here on Thursday during your special session. In my research and in facilitating this comprehensive sexual health program, I've heard from youth again and again saying that they did not have the education that they needed, which does not just entail anti-trafficking education, it entails comprehensive sexual health education. And without that education, they do not know how to navigate their bodies, and as the woman spoke before, consent is incredibly important, and we can help them understand what those words mean, what consent is and what consent is not. And they have told me repeatedly that they are not able to do these and that they could have actually navigated out of some of these situations had they had comprehensive sexual health education. I apologize. So when we don't provide our youth with this knowledge, we know that they are at an increased risk of trafficking, and we can actually prevent trafficking, because not only does it provide youth with knowledge, but it creates spaces for our youth to learn how to protect themselves and navigate complex relationships. They are often, youth are often trafficked by people that they know: boyfriends, family members, and even friends. And when we create comprehensive sexual health education in schools, we create spaces where they can talk about these things, talk about their bodies, and talk with trusted adults about these issues, and they feel more comfortable to navigate these challenging situations. So I urge you...
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Next speaker, which is Amelia.
My name is Amelia, and I am here to tell you my story. It all started when my parents decided to put me and my sister in a K-8 charter school. I was excited and scared at the same time. It, not long after some kids started calling me names, I started feeling depressed. I was getting bad grades. The last straw was when my parents, was when a kid punched me. I immediately told the teacher what was the right thing to do, but guess what she said? Sit down. The next morning, my parents surprised us with Morgan Woods tees shirts and told us we were officially back at Morgan Woods. I was super excited. Excited. Now, my grades are up to As and Bs. I am surrounded by the people I love, and I know they love me too. Ms. Zimmerman taught me to read when I was four years old. Ms. Didiego was strict but kind. She taught me boundaries, and I will never forget her. Ms. Abey taught me that it was okay to be bubbly me and to have a growth mindset. Ms. Farland taught me that I am capable and I can do anything I set my mind to. Ms. Gatto taught me to push myself and be an active thinker. Morgan Woods is more than just a school. Kids are more than just numbers. Teachers do more than just teach. They love. They make a school a home. Closing Morgan Woods would not just hurt these amazing teachers, but it would hurt me and my friends. Please don't close this school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great job. Great job. Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Anna, and I'm here to tell you that your vote matters. I've been at Morgan Woods ever since kindergarten, and now I am in fifth grade. Some might think of kids as just numbers, and a school is just a place, but my school is so much more than that. My school is my home away from home. The staff and students are my family. Don't separate my family, and please don't shut down my school. That's a low that no one should stoop down to. Please keep Morgan Woods open and say no to the third number.
Boundaries are right.
Um, thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Some smart girls.
Hi. I was told the tale. I was number 24. Hello. My name is Ideal Chapel, and I'm here to tell you how your vote on proposed boundary changes would affect many in my community. Like many women, I wear many hats, and tonight, I'm going to wear two. So, imagine here. First off, I'm a mom of two girls, as you just saw. They attend Morgan Woods Elementary. Last year, I was at a crossroads. Due to unforeseen circumstances and a growing teacher shortage, my daughters were left without a gifted teacher. Keeping that in mind, my oldest would be going to middle school. My husband and I decided to put them in a K-8 charter school. While my oldest transitioned well, I watched as my youngest spiraled and her mental health suffered. Once, my vivacious daughter, she grew more and more despondent with each passing day. For the first time ever, her grades suffered tremendously. After a month, I withdrew them, and they returned home. Today, they are both thriving, thanks to the love and support of their school and their teachers. So now, I'm going to take my hat off, and I also have the privilege of working as an English-language learner bilingual parent at Morgan Woods. So they feel it the first day, that they feel loved.
Good evening. I'm 25. My name is Jessica Rotana. I'm a parent and school board PTA member. Until this year, my fifth grader has not had a normal year in school since first grade, and my third grader has never experienced a normal year of school until this year. Our students have... Our students have spent the last three years isolated, e-learning, distancing, sanitizing, masking, and quarantining. Now, our kids are just establishing friends and normal socialization skills. Under Scenario 2, the students on Brown Road in the Van Dijk Farms community will be carved out and rezoned away from their peers attending Martinez Middle School and sent to Smith Middle School. Our kids should not be ripped away to go to a completely different school from their friends and peers. As a parent, I feel burned out from navigating my child's education, well-being, and socialization during a global pandemic. Over the holiday season, myself, my family, and my neighbors were thrown back into advocating and worrying for our children and what upheaval we could face in a few short months. What emotional cost is this to our students, our families, and our communities? Haven't our children been through enough disruption these past three years? If you think sending students from Martinez Middle School will increase the number of students at Smith Middle School, it won't. The parents will find other options, including private or homeschooling. I have a petition I started less than a week ago. It has 250 signatures against sending our children from Martinez to Smith in our community. Myself and my neighbors have spoken, and as our representatives on the school board, we implore you to speak for our children, our families, and our community, and vote no for Scenario 2 and against rezoning Brown Road in the Van Dijk Farms community away from their peers and their friends at Martinez Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael and Mary Ann Denny?
Appreciate the time today. My name is Michael Denny. I'm a resident of Beach Park and a parent of two. I moved from Long Island, New York 15 years ago and was the product of public schools. When I moved to Tampa, I rented an apartment until my wife and I could afford to purchase a home in the Plant District. We specifically purchased our home 10 years ago for the A-rated schools Grady, Coleman, and Plant. The proposed Option 3 would shift our children into a C-rated school after attending two A-rated schools. Doesn't really make sense to me. That being said, 10 years ago, my wife and I signed up for paying higher taxes to live in an area that was zoned for these schools, and obviously, the property values continue to go up as a result of people seeking out these schools. This process seems very rushed and was launched over a school break. Allowing a longer time for a feedback period would be ideal, as those of us that purchased our homes in these areas that would be affected feel this is very rushed. Very little information has been shared on cost savings, when and how they would actually materialize. It's very unclear on offsetting impacts on the cost. Higher level of doubt is projected on estimated cost savings. Property taxes will fall in the impacted areas and will not be one-for-one as an improvement in the other areas. There's been no published financial data supporting the actual benefit of any of these proposed changes for the public to analyze. It is unclear if there's actually any benefit for the school district other than this unsubstantiated savings. To me, the likely outcome would be a referendum for parents to shift their kids to either homeschool, private school, and additionally create further negative financial impact on the--
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Demarys Allen?
I'm number 27.
What I'll do, I usually, you'll state your own name, but I know we have many speakers that usually don't come, so I'll start doing my best with everybody's name.
My name is Demarys Allen. I am a parent of two kids. One is a graduate of Hillsborough County Public Schools, and one is a senior. So, I will not be impacted by this decision. However, I care deeply about it. But first, I want to talk in support of comprehensive sexual health education. It is incredibly important that we offer this to our kids. Parents who want to opt out, have the option to opt out, we need to be clear in our communication to make sure that they understand when it's coming, and they know when the papers are coming home, what they need to understand to send in, to make sure that parents who want to opt out can, but they don't opt the rest of us who have chosen to allow our kids to participate in this comprehensive education, out of this education because of their choices. As far as re-boundaries are concerned, I understand that this is incredibly difficult. This is not going to be an easy discussion for any of you, and it is going to be a little bit of a nightmare. But I am concerned that the way we are approaching this is making the situation worse. I frequent a coffee shop because I'm a little bit of a coffee addict, and I was talking to one of the parents that works there. She has a 5-year-old that has just started kindergarten in our public schools. Her house does not have access to internet because it was just newly built, and her street doesn't have access and will not have access until the entire street is built. She only has a cellphone, which she has to use the hotspot on the cellphone for her to continue her college education and for her child to occasionally get on to iReady and the programs that she needs. So, when she goes on to the map, she cannot see it completely. It makes it difficult for her to have access to what is happening in her neighborhood and how her child will be impacted. In addition, this meeting starts at 4:00. It's not accessible to working parents. The 5:30 meeting is challenging for working parents. If you truly want to engage the public, go to where they are, and don't expect them to come to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Boyd Wein? Mr. Boyd?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having this opportunity for us to speak our mind. My name is Boyd Wein. I did not move into the Plant High School District. I was born into it 80 years ago in two weeks. One thing that I would like to say, that there are several reasons why Plant High School, and this just didn't happen today or last year. Plant High School has been one of the top-rated schools in our Hillsborough County school system forever. My family history is, my mother-in-law was in the first graduating class from Plant. My mom and daddy both graduated from Plant and went on to college. My wife and I grew up together and were in the same class at Plant. Both of our children went to Plant, and all three of my grandchildren have graduated from Plant. This makes me mad that you want to take away history, tradition, and investment in the community that I grew up in. I don't see how this, I mean, it's lacking transparency and little community involvement. I personally have lived in the same house. My wife and I bought that house in April of 1971, when I returned from my second tour as an artillery officer and helicopter pilot in Vietnam, and I'm still living in that house. My dear wife, Jan, passed away over six years ago. I think that Plant history--
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Liam Smith?
I am Liam Smith. Let me get this angled down so I can hear. I am Liam Smith, and I am a straight A, Principal's Honorable, and 5th grade student at A-plus Grady Elementary School. I have a dream of being an engineer and coder. Coleman and Middle School, Coleman Middle School, sorry, and Plant High School specialize in both of these fields. If you change North Bon Air and West Shore Palms' school zones, I won't get the same educational opportunities, and I will lose all my friendships I have made in the past six years, not to mention to have to leave all my sports teams. This will be disastrous to my educational and mental well-being. Please do not include North Bon Air and West Shore Palms in the Area Scenarios 2 and 3. Thank you. And I would just like to elaborate on this speech a bit. I have all my friends here, and I just don't want to lose everything we've made. My whole family has been here, and we've loved this place, and a lot of people have moved down here to be in these zones, and a lot of them are going to have to move and lose all they've done. I even have a friend who's moved here and spent $2 million to get in a house just to get into the Plant District, and he might lose it all. And this is why I really think we should not include North Bon Air and West Shore Palms in Area Scenarios 2 and 3. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President there. Thank you. It's hard to go after that.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Landetta?
Yes, thank you. Well, my name is Maria Landetta. I came to the United States eight years ago from Venezuela, so I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. That's not the case in my country. I am an attorney from Venezuela, so for me, it is crazy important, the education. One of the things when I came here and rented the property was effective looking at the zone, right? And I was in Mitchell Elementary School, Wilson, and then Plant. After a lot of sacrifices, we were able to buy a property, always thinking to keep the same zone. And we finally bought a property in West Shore Palms. And the school now that my kids are is in Coleman, and we will not have the opportunity to go to Plant, instead to go to Jefferson, which is Level C instead of Level A. And my daughter is already in Plant High School, and she should be graduated next year, and with the changes, that would not be the case. We have a petition also with more than 1,200 signatures. Zoning is approved by the county, and basically, this is something like is happening already from years, right? The houses are being built, and probably that's the reason you have now overcrowded schools. The change, of course, from Jefferson to Plant, we will not be here if all the schools were the same level, which should be. I'm glad to have the opportunity to bring the fact, like Matthew Luther King gave that speech many years ago, and we are still here in 2023 dealing with unbalancing in the schools. And this area is not known as the most diversified area, and with these changes proposed in Scenario 2 and 3, that we most increasing the non-diversity in those schools. These decisions are very premature. I think that the data--
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Next speaker, please. And that will be Patricia Cannon. Then Ms. Lyons will be after that. Then Mr. Das.
Hi. My name is Patricia Cannon, and I just want to tell you a little bit about us. So, my family moved here 14 years ago, and we had twin 1-year-olds. We wanted them to be able to go to Plant High School, so we looked for a house in the Plant District. We found one. We bought it. Four years in, it flooded, and then it flooded every two years after that, until about two years ago, when the city of Tampa came along and asked us if they could buy our house. They asked us. They did not tell us that they were going to inimit, eminent domain us. They said they would buy our house whenever we were ready because we were afraid that we were not going to be able to find something in the Plant District for our family. We were able to find a house, a lot of land that we could build a house on. It was only four blocks away, and you guessed it, it was in Plant District, so we were okay with it. Sold our house to the city, and now, if you look up that house, and it's 109 South Crental Avenue, K-R-E-N-T-A-L, and if you look that up, Scenario 1, 2, and 3, zero changes. Where we moved to, 2 and 3, my children will be going to Jefferson. Present day, they are in Plant. They are freshmen. They are getting straight As. They are in, they're not in AP class this year. They will be in two AP classes next year. They've been recommended for that. They're in a bunch of clubs. They're doing sports. They are with their friends that they have known since they were in kindergarten. And if they get removed from Plant, they will have maybe one person that will go with them in their friend group. They have eight groups. It's a group of eight, and they are all best friends, and they have been since the beginning, and they still are. And I'm just asking you to please not kick my children out of a school that I've been trying to get them into for the last 14 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, school board members. Thank you very much for hearing from me today. My name is Ellen Lyons. I am Vice President of Advocacy at the Hillsborough County PTA. I'm also Advocacy Chair at Plant High School. I have two children at Plant. They are fourth-generation Plant, and we are affected by both Scenarios 2 and 3. Thank you for greatly improving the format of the Galleria walkthroughs by adding a presentation and the question-and-answer sessions. I think that really improves the process. The district says that it is in clear need of a boundary analysis to address underutilized schools that cost more to operate and take dollars from normally utilized schools. And we want the district to be fiscally strong, but we also want it to be successful in selecting attendance boundaries that are going to maximize student outcomes and not just shuffle kids from overcrowded schools into underutilized schools or combined underutilized schools. Given the tumult of the last three years, it's imperative that the community authentically engage in this analysis and eventually accept the results. Although we've been assured that the public will receive the data that supports the projected capital and annual cost savings, there's only four days left in the public comment period for online comments. And so, even if that data is shared today, we're not going to have a very long time to analyze the data, to understand the assumptions behind the data, because there may be an assumption that bus service costs X cents a mile. We don't know what those assumptions are and what's built into that data to support the cost savings. So, the district has a policy that requires attendance boundary changes to be announced one year in advance. The policy exists for a reason, and the short timeline for comment, much of which occurred over the holidays when we couldn't contact schools for information, coupled with the lack of data to verify the amount and categories of projected cost savings and the prospect of big changes in August, have made this process more difficult. Slowing the process down will-- Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Das?
Good evening. Now, as a caveat, I'm going to say that my two most recent graduates were for Jesuit and Berkeley Prep. However, I'm a proud graduate of, believe it or not, the University of Justin High School at 441 Cypress Street in Tampa, Florida. But I'm here to speak about another issue, and I did play football there as well, that Asia Royster came and spoke on our show, and I found out that she is one coach for 25 young ladies at Spoto High School. And she also informed us that for some strange reasons, we don't have activity buses to get our young ladies to basketball games, or all of the young ladies to basketball games. Parents are now responsible for transportation for young ladies and/or men. I don't know enough of the details, and I apologize for that. But I remember that when I was coming up, the last thing we had to worry about is how we were going to get back and forth to our events. And I know I don't need to tell you all, particularly with the rise in crime among young people, that when they have somewhere to be and it's involving their institutions of learning, they tend to stay out of trouble, and they go on to do great things. So, I don't know what you all have to do, and I'm going to look into it because you should be here a little bit more frequently. But now, I'm not really impacted by, unfortunately, a lot of this that they're talking about now. But I'm very bothered by the fact that parents and teachers and/or coaches have to get people, young, or athletes to their events. And I'm hoping that sometime soon, you all will address it, and I'll definitely be here Thursday because I can be. And I thank you for your time, and I yield to the next speaker. Y'all take care.
Thank you. Thank you. Magalise Reyes? Magalise? Okay. Kelly Hall? Robin Lockett?
Hello, school board members. My name is Robin Lockett, and two things. I've been listening to the comments, and it's so-- I've been listening to the comments and it's so interesting. You got a big dilemma on your hand. The most important thing about this for me is how do you be sensitive with equity? People don't want to be bust out and we don't want to be bust in. So how do you treat this with equity? A sensible feedback around equity, a lens of equity. That's the important thing. So I went to the meeting last night. It was very interesting. I was disappointed in it. Glad it happened. Glad the community came out. I was disappointed in it because the fonts were too small on the, on the, on the map. Couldn't see. The projector, you know, you couldn't see that, right? Because you heard complaints about that. The facilitator from XYZ, very heavy accent, couldn't understand a word he was saying. There was no real effort to listen to the community. I saw tons and tons and tons of, of questions being handed to young ladies. I want to know what you're going to do with those questions because none of them were answered. So what are you going to do? What's your plan to make that stuff available? And there were kids asking questions. How are you going to make that stuff, answer those questions so those individuals can see what the responses are? All I say is transparency, equity, and, and let the community speak. You can probably get some good ideas from the community versus you spending $500,000 and, and spending all that money with this agency. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Magalise is here now? I think she's here. Magalise is here, or Kelly Hall? No? Okay. We'll just continue moving on. Samira Obaid?
Respected members of the board, superintendent, parents, guardians, and community members, good evening. My name is Sam. I'm an activist, a poet, a community parent, and an advocate for youth voice. I'd like to commend you all on the powerful lifesaving work that you're doing in creating comprehensive sex ed curriculum and to convince you to please continue on this path. My argument is really simple. Children rarely ever want to talk to any adult about sex, let alone their parents. I'm 38 years old. I definitely don't want to talk to my parents about sex. I'm sure y'all understand. It's unfortunate, though, that our kids don't feel comfortable talking to adults about such an important topic. And it's unfortunate that they don't trust us to handle this topic well, but it is our reality. And we, as adults, are responsible for creating this reality where we prioritize our comfort over our children's ability to make well-informed decisions for themselves. Hillsborough County Schools curriculum is a great step in the right direction. Children are also not stupid. I am tired, as an advocate for youth, listening to adults hide behind the word innocence to call young humans stupid. If we don't provide them with evidence-based, safe resources, they will seek them out elsewhere. The onus has, is, and will always be on us. This brings us, this brings me to my last point. History is repeating itself. My community is once again being accused of being pedophiles and groomers, when in reality, we're not the ones trying to limit the tools, resources, and language available to our young humans to call out inappropriate behavior, sexual assault, and prevent child trafficking. Let's be clear. An abstinence, an abstinence-based curriculum is racist, sexist, and queerphobic. You are all educators. You know what I'm saying is true. Please stay on the path of prioritizing our children, their education, and their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Amy Granger Welch.
My name is Amy Marie Granger Welch. I am the Hillsborough County Council PTA President. PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. It's great to see so many advocates out here speaking up for our students. Thank you for coming. Lots of PTA, that makes my heart happy. We want to thank you for changing the Galleria walkthrough format to allow for more community conversation regarding the proposed boundary changes. We hope to see even more authentic and accessible and purposeful outreach into our communities that will be most affected by boundary changes as well. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in the Human Trafficking Initiative to help raise awareness of the many ways human traffickers are preying on our students in Hillsborough County. We appreciate the school board for taking the lead when it comes to educating students about their own bodies. Hillsborough PTA supports curriculum that is honest, clear, meets state standards. A judge has already determined that Hillsborough County's proposed sexual education curriculum meets the standards. We commend you and district staff for working through the issues to bring forth quality and truthful curriculum for our students. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. David Moore?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Moore and I'm President of the Van Dyke Farms Homeowners Association. Van Dyke Farms is a 423-home community in northwest Hillsborough County. And together with Brown Road residents, we've been singled out to be moved from Martinez Middle School to Smith Middle School. Martinez is, of course, an A-rated school and Smith is a C school. Okay, or B, B if you want to say so. But, but anyway, of our homeowners, hundreds of them have already signed a petition or otherwise registered their concern relative to this move. And it's been all for all the reasons you've heard today: students' education, their friendships, long-term family planning. But I want to suggest to you that you need to take into consideration other competing factors, too. I know Hillsborough County has a major traffic issue problem. And just think about it, Van Dyke Farms is just a few hundred yards off the Veterans Expressway. Presently, our students go north up to Martinez Middle School, which is the next exit, is only a mile. And that's away from rush hour traffic. If we were to go to Smith, that's three exits to the south, some five to seven miles, right into the jaws of rush hour traffic, okay? And if we don't take the expressway, then you take Gun Highway, which is one lane each way. And if you go there during rush hour, it's already a parking lot. So just when you look at all these various decisions, not only take into consideration the majority of the comments you hear, but also potential for traffic concerns. Please vote for Scenario 1. If you do vote for Scenario 2, please do not have Van Dyke and Brown Road residents move from Martinez down to Smith. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amelia Dashner?
My name is Millie Dashner and I'm 10 years old from Van Dyke Farms in Odessa. I have attended Hammond Elementary School, an A-rated school, since first grade, and I'm currently in fifth grade, and also a straight A student. It took me about a year after becoming a new student at Hammond to make friends and become comfortable and confident going to school. Then COVID hit, taking a toll on my academics, social, and physical well-being. I feel this is the first full year since COVID that I'm learning and, and exploiting without disruption. I enjoy participating in Pawpals, working with ESE students, as well as Hammond Course, all-county course, and upcoming Black History Month Bowl. I want to speak because I have been looking forward to attending Martinez Middle School, an A-rated school, and participating in their programs, activities, and sports. They offer that Smith, a C-rated school, does not offer at this time. I ask when this decision is made that you take into account not only the level of education and extracurricular activities I want from Martinez, but the lifelong friendship, friendships many of us have worked so hard to build to continue at the same middle school together and the effect will have on hundreds of us possibly delaying the strong path we have been on since the COVID delay. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion and concerns on this topic.
Thank you. Next question.
Can we get confirmation if Smith is B or C?
Yes, we can. But it is, it is a B. It has been an A or B. It's never been a C, just to clarify.
Come on, it's a good school.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Howard. I'm sorry, Terrence? Woodard? I'm sorry, Mr. Woodard?
How y'all doing? I'm not much of a politics guy. This situation, it sounds very unfortunate. But it's unfortunate to hear like what's going on with the school system. Everybody's upset about going to this school, that school. Maybe we should upgrade all the schools to the same level. That's the only thing I could see as far as solving this problem. I didn't even come here for this, this issue today. I came for the same issue my friend discussed with Coach Asia Royster. She's a high school coach, a basketball coach. She has 25 kids. She has to coach varsity and JV basketball. She has to, she's responsible for getting them to and from their games. I don't know how the county can expect kids to participate in sports and have extracurricular activities if they don't have a way to and from these activities. As they said before, working-class parents, they can't get here at 4:00. So they can't pick their kids up from school if they're working. Some moms, some dads are working two and three jobs, two, trying to make ends meet. They, they can't afford to take off and go pick up these kids. Some kids miss out. And some kids use sports to go get a better, better education. They don't live in the Plant District. No disrespect to Plant. Some kids need athletics to be able to, to be able to further their education. I just think this situation needs to be, it needs to be reviewed or whatever needs to be done. It needs to be handled. Because this is, is just ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you. Kay Jones? Kay Jones, and then we have Brianna Saucier, and then Margarita Novak.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Saucier. I am a working mother who rushed here from Odessa because it's so important of a topic. And I am also a parent of two sons who go to Hammond currently and are zoned for Martinez and Steinbrenner. That is a large part of the reason why my husband and I bought our home in Odessa seven years ago was for those school zones. And currently, my two sons are AGP. I am a co-homeroom parent and a volunteer, very involved, very active. And we've built our community at Hammond with those families that are going onto Martinez. My third grader had pretty intense anxiety going back to school after COVID that we're just coming out of. And we really, our community is important to us, moving on to Martinez. So like a few others who have spoken, we are in the Brown Road area. And so our area, Brown Road and Van Dyke Farms, will be ripped out of that community for middle school, sent to another school that while I understand may not be quite the reputation that it seems to have got, it is still a lower-performing school than Martinez where we moved to be part of that community. And to the last gentleman's point about this topic, it also makes it hard for working parents because there is a lot of traffic and construction going to Smith from the area where, where we live. So I just plead with you and appreciate your consideration to vote against Scenario 2 and the disruption that it'll cause for our community. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. And then Margarita Novak? That's what I have as our last speaker for tonight? No?
Hi, my name is Margarita Novak. This is my first time speaking. And so I just want to say hello to the board and I want to thank you for your time today. And I've actually come here today as a mom with a family of four kids that will be entering elementary, middle school, and high school for the upcoming year for the boundary changes that are being analyzed. Upon making these decisions that are being implemented, there has yet to be a clear public understanding for the beneficial changes being made in the structural aspects of the projected capital and annual cost savings. Unfortunately, communication and discussion about concerns has not been transparent to students, families, and communities for a whole entire county. And this is a huge gap for the, for the underrepresentations for children that are going to be largely affected by the two of the three choices. The vendor that is making the data analysis, XY, or I'm sorry, WXY Studio, is using a database on a survey completed by the county community. However, it's failed to get information from the community that are mostly getting affected with schools closing. Thank you for changing your schedules and allowing these galleries that you have opened to be more public to comments and questions and answers. Yet, the main issue of the public is having that these new implement, I'm sorry, that these new implications are busy with their own personal plans. Boundary changes are usually, sorry, are usually conducted over a year span. And this seems to have been rushed after a statement back on June 21st stating Anderson Davison, that you were already planning on not following the district policy requirements to continue a potential implement on August of this coming year, 2023. So knowingly already that you're doing something out of the normal required policy, they need a significant push.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. We have one, our last speaker for tonight is Mr. Piggott.
How are you, board? Good to be here. Of course, basically, where we see this, I really hope that we will most definitely focus and think about how we can bring our other schools to the level of having good quality education. It is sad to hear our superintendent make the mention that our students will get better education if they leave from Jennings and from Armwood to go to Middleton and SLY. Very disappointing. However, I'm here today for a different matter. On August, on August 21st, at Armwood, there was a teacher, and the teachers, they had this thick sign on their door that says "Cracker Country." I contacted the superintendent immediately and asked him about why is that acceptable? Because we're going to outrage about that. Because after a while, in the text message to the superintendent, there are going to be teachers saying the N-word also, and that'd be okay. And so none of them should be okay. He fixed it, texts, "What school is that?" Went there and said, "I'm on it, taking care of it." Well, as I thought before, we come down to September and right at Williams, seventh grader, my nephew, in class with his peers, talking to a student, the plan, and the student decides to mess up the desk or whatever they was doing, and he called her a midget. When he called her a midget, the teacher stopped the class and said, "What if I call you a nigger?" It's a Caucasian teacher. That's what she said. So surely, contacted superintendent, he do what he always do, give a bunch of promises. Yet, I asked the superintendent to send out an email that that word would not be acceptable in Hillsborough County. I asked the teacher, "Why didn't you say the N-word?" She said, "'Cause I wanted him to get the point." Now, he's in seventh grade. He wouldn't understand if I said N-word. So that's why I asked him, "What if I called him a nigger?" Well, superintendent, it's still happening in your school district. I have to tell you now, I hope you can send out an email to let your teachers know it's unacceptable in this district.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment. Okay, and that concludes our public comment. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Gray and I have a second by Member Washington. Please vote when your lights appear. And that passes unanimously. We are now going to, Superintendent Davis will highlight our administrative appointments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This evening, we have an opportunity to highlight two new leaders to our organization who will be taking on the new role of principal within our school district. Tonight, the first, we'll ask for that slide to come up. The first individual we'd like to highlight is an individual that is a native of Alabama. However, this individual has grown up in the Tampa region. This individual went on to get a degree in early childhood, went on to get a master's in educational leadership, has been in education for 16 years, seven years as an administrator. Started as a math teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, transitioned to a math teacher, also went on to be a behavior specialist, and is currently the assistant principal at Tomlin Middle School. This individual gets a chance to take on a new responsibility at a school that has so much support, especially from Titus, Titus O'Neill, Thaddeus Bullard, at the Thaddeus Bullard Academy at SLY Magnet Middle. It is my opportunity to introduce the new principal, Mr. Akeem Young, to please come up. Got to walk the walk and be recognized for being a new leader in Hillsborough County. I, listen, I want to tell you right now, listen here, the young man in the back. Uh, I, listen, I want to tell you right now, yeah, listen here, the young man in the back, he gets yourself, you know, you know, that we'd be here to support. Sorry, I just gave you a new school. It's not even your school. I just gave you, he is the new principal. So I'm so sorry at Junta, uh, at middle school. I just gave him a new school. Congratulations. Mr. Young, we, we are excited for you. Thaddeus better going, I got two principals. Can't have the one other one. Congratulations. Get ready to go to Junta. It is a great school. You'll have great support. We'll continue to be there with you to help you through this process. Welcome. Let's give him a round of applause. He only gets one school tonight, not two. Thank you, sir. Ms. Brown, I gave your school away. So come on up here. She's like, whatever dude. And Thad's like texting me right now. New principal, as you may, you know, this young lady, the principal, assistant principal of the year for the 22, 23 school year. You can clap for her. She gets a chance to lead. This individual began teaching at Greco, I believe in 96. Transition, I think in 2002, when Liberty opened, has been at Liberty the entire time over 20 years, has been an assistant principal for 16 years, is the APC of curriculum, is a really the foundation of this school, has done a really good job helping Frank Diaz transition as a new principal. He calls me like, dude, please don't do it. Don't do it. You know, but I can tell you right now, you get a chance to go to a school. I just gave it away to, uh, Mr. Young, but I'm sorry, Mr. Young, you get a good chance to go to a school that has so many different resources. As a, you know, my greatest job I've ever had was a principal. I never had the resources that you will receive at SLY Magnet Middle School. You get a chance to have Thaddeus Bullard in your backyard and he will be there many days, all day before or during after school. But it comes with a lot of love, a lot of transformation and a lot of care for your community and for your children. You get a chance to have one of the greatest schools in the school districts and potentially one of the greatest schools in the, in the future in this nation. Congratulations, Mrs. Angela Brown. You're the new principal of SLY Magnet Middle School. Yeah, yeah, right. Uh, right. The Thaddeus Bullard Foundation will provide that. Congratulations to Mr. Young, Mrs. Brown. Mr. Young thought he was going to get two payrolls, uh, two schools, but congratulations to each of you. I want, I want to let you know that, um, and I say this all the time, this job is difficult as you can see. You got to make some really hard decisions, but openly, if you continue to make decisions based on students, then we'll continue to make certain we move the needle in every facet and every organization. Thank you for being champions of change and we look forward to your partnership. Congratulations to each, each of you and your family. Your family, please be there to support them. They'll need you every single day because they'll be there all the time. But, uh, you know, find that balance with family, friends and loved ones in school and, and let's get ready to do some great work. Congratulations again. All right, that's it.
And we'll give, um, all those families a moment to leave. I know there's quite a few families here as we move on to our, our public hearing comment. Give everybody just a moment. Okay. What we'll do is we'll go ahead and take a, a, a five minute recess. Okay? Take a five minute recess.
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and resume the meeting. Right before public comment, we're going to go ahead and do our public hearing on the adoption of the revised policies. A public hearing on adoption for the revised policies, adoption process. This is a requirement pursuant to state law and board policy. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak about the policies that are recommended for adoption by the board and to provide input to the board. The policies were advertised and have been available for public review. Mr. Porter, our school board attorney, will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Before you are four policies that have been workshopped and reviewed by the board and by staff with recommendations from the superintendent that they be approved. Their policies, 5120, assignment within district, that was presented by Member Hahn. Policy 5350, student suicide, that was brought forward by Student Services. Policy 8415, threat assessment teams brought by Student Services. And 9800 charter schools brought by Charter Schools. These are, it is a public hearing. You should ask if anybody wants to speak, Madam Chair. Otherwise, these are ripe for a vote and approval.
Does anyone at this time want to speak for the public hearing on the adoption of the revised policy? I will now close the public hearing. I need a motion and second to adopt the policy. I have a motion by Member Gray, and I have a second by Member Washington. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. We will now move to six o'clock, the employee input. Even though we have a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it is sometimes difficult for employees of our district to attend meetings at 4:00 P.M. There are so many ways for employees to make their voices heard, including through union representatives, emails, phone calls, one-on-one conversations, and public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we're creating another avenue for employees to speak to the board. We're setting aside 30 minutes for employees of the district to speak to the board about any issues that are on your mind. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda items on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity for you to speak to the board about any issues related to your job or the district. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we will call up our first speaker. I think we just have a few this evening.
Hey, good evening and Happy New Year, everyone. Rob Cre, President of CTA. Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought your comments at the beginning of our meeting about that sometimes we're going to agree to disagree, but we're all working towards the same goal, which is we're going to be fighting for the schools that our students deserve. And I think that's super important. I thought that message was great. So that's really what we have to capture here in 2023. The speakers that we had today, I feel, is encouraging to what we're doing here in the district. Our communities still believe in us. They still believe in our schools. They still believe in our teachers, and we need to make sure that we are, you know, listening to them and utilizing them in the changes that we're doing because they're also fighting for the schools that they know that the students deserve. I just want to be very clear that they need to know that school grades do not indicate how safe our schools are, how dedicated our schools are, how hard our employees work at these sites, or how hard the students are working at these sites. It's truly based on one measure, the state test. So when we talk about school grades, we're not talking about how great these places are. We know they're amazing, and the teachers that care about these students are happening at every single site, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, all the way down to Z. They're doing everything they can for these kids. Now, and how about that one student that talked about there, have a friend that has a $2 million home and how the pressure they're under? How amazing was that student, huh? I need new friends. But one thing we know is that we need to find a way to incentivize employees here to Hillsborough County. We need to get them here. I mean, we have way too many vacancies. We need to settle this contract. We need to get to a spot where people can be secure in the job that they have so they can go out there and show that passion every single day in the classrooms. So once again, as we left 2022, I ask you to join us in fighting for the schools that our students deserve and collaborate even when sometimes we don't agree on how to get there. We need to find a way. So thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, it's Carissa Denica from Gaither High School. I usually don't talk off the cuff because quite frankly, it gets me in trouble sometimes. But here I am. I was just busy today, and I couldn't just sit down and write something. But just on my mind, just some different things that have been there. One, I just want to talk real quick about grades. We know that the highest indicator for a grade, for a school grade, is the wealth around it. And so, not to say that those teachers aren't amazing, not to say that those kids aren't amazing, but they absolutely do have more resources than of the students that are at other places. So the idea that we say one's an A school, one's a B school, one's a C school always is going to infuriate me as a poor person who grew and went through this school system. Additionally, I want to talk about issues that I am struggling with, with myself, with my career. Generally, I would love to say I love teaching, and I do on some days. But it's what to do further? What can I do to improve my family's life, my home life balance, the money issue? Obviously, we all know that there's an issue. There is also an issue of, okay, well, is it worth it for me to go and get my masters? And what do I want to get my masters in? Because right now, there's no point in getting my masters in anything education-related because I don't know if I'm going to stay here. And then that leads me to the students that I have taught, that have, that I've been able to push towards, that I have been able to talk with as an aside, not just as a math teacher, but as just a person who deals with the same things that they deal with. And I think about those students. I have one student in particular right now who, I'm going to get emotional, but she knitted me from, with no pattern, a Carissa plant, because she knows my first name is Carissa, knitted, no pattern, it's beautiful. And she knitted it over break for me, and she's amazing and wonderful. And I tried to tell her all the time of how wonderful she is, because she is. But it also makes me think of the Andys and the Lauras and the Crystal and the Gavin that I have taught through the years, that I feel so proud that they are able to do what they're able to do. And am I going to leave those and not have those same kids later on in there? And is that enough? Are those one, two, three, four, five gems a year enough to keep me here when I'm not respected and I'm just getting hit with those daily hassles? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Davis. My name is Rebecca Boer. I am a teacher at Riverview High School. Today, I sat here as the other commentators were speaking about the sex ed curriculum that's being proposed, and I couldn't help but think about the joke that I like to make at the beginning of the year, that I hope that this will be the year that nobody ends up pregnant in my class. Unfortunately, today, a student told me she was pregnant. She's the second one this year. This is why our students need sex ed, because otherwise they will get pregnant. They're going to have sex. We can talk about abstaining, and that's great, but like, the truth is that they will have sex, and we can teach them how to protect themselves. We need to teach them, because nobody wants to talk about sex with their parents, as you heard earlier. But they could talk about it with us. I was trained by the U.S. government on how to teach sex ed. I worked in the Peace Corps for two years prior to becoming a teacher with Hillsborough County Public Schools, and that's primarily what I did in Cameroon for two years. And I would love to be able to talk about that with my students, but I definitely don't feel comfortable in today's society. I don't want to, you know, get in trouble for anything, but all I want to do is offer facts. That's all I want to do. Other than that, I wanted to say that mental health is really important, and I appreciate that I hear a lot of words about support for mental health from this board. That I attended a training today at my school on ACT NOW and on how to help my students, and tomorrow, they're going to have a presentation on mental health. Two of my students have been Baker acted this year, and one told me that she has attempted suicide in the past. It's one of the reasons why I let her, you know, there, I allow students to come to me and talk to me during my lunch. I often give out my lunches to meet with my students because my students are important to me. I want to do the best for them. Today, I gave up my lunch, not for one of my students, but for a new teacher. I was excited to have a vacancy filled at my school that has been vacant so far this year, and today, a new teacher started, and she's amazing. And I am so excited to have somebody to talk to about what I'm doing because she's the only other person that actually teaches what I teach. And now I have somebody that I can talk to about it and plan with, and it's lovely. But of course, I have to do that during my lunchtime because we don't have a common planning time, and there is no time for that. And I would love to have more time to talk with her and to plan and to talk with other people and to plan. And, you know, my lessons, while I'm a pretty good teacher, highly effective according to our schools, I'd love to be even more effective. I'd love to do more. And I would also like to be paid. So please also pay us more. That's a big thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi. I just wanted to, first of all, apologize. I was the one that outburst back there. Thank you to the officer that calmed me down. But I opened Sergeant Smith Middle School 15 years ago. I am still there. I am very proud to be there. It is a great school, and I appreciate you guys sticking up for us when the parents want to call it a C school, which really isn't that bad. A C is average. However, we've never been a C, and I really appreciate, and I couldn't tell who it was that changed it. And I was appreciative of the parent that clarified that. But Hillsborough County has been great to me. I've been a teacher 23 years. I'm almost at the other end of the road, and Hillsborough County has been great to our two daughters that have grown up here. And of course, we know Sergeant Smith is being affected somehow, some way through the boundary changes. And of course, as a school, we're hoping and praying for scenario one. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes our employee input. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to the, the following items will be heard, which will be just one item today, C 1102. 1102 memorandum of understanding with Workforce Development Partners Corporation for implementing Future Career Academies. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. First and foremost, this item has been adjusted, and I wanted to make certain that I sent that to you. I'm sorry for the short notice, but, you know, we understand the timbersure related to being able to alleviate not using general funds currently until we really figure out how to settle the contract for our teachers and get to that place. So this was a split-funded original model where $150,000 was going to workforce development, and $225,000 was going to general fund to be able to serve and expand this initiative with the Future Career Academies, which has been a beautiful partner since 2015. As you know, this is an organization that reaches out to a number of our local companies and agencies to be able to prepare students for workforce development opportunities. It started in 2015 in the Plant City area. Then a couple of years later, everyone saw the benefits of it and expanded to South County and East County in 2019, 2020, to be able to serve more students, prepare them for workforce development, expose them to soft skills, being able to help them prepare for resume building, interview skills. At the same token, have access to credentials that will lead to a livable wage within our community and have a foundation to be able to raise a family. In that process, you know, coming in, we, you know, we once again went back to FCA and said, you know what? Every high school is begging to be a part of this process, that we want you to be able to expand this initiative. In that, they've, they've taken on that challenge. With that, though, it's going to need to have additional assistance from the school district, as we have 32 schools actively involved in this process, not only our high schools, but our career technical centers as well, and being able to serve our children within this organization. So what I'm, the ask is tonight is to be able to use $150,000 of workforce development money, only at this particular time, which is grant money driven to be able to expand the workforce. And this is to address and have, you know, to address our events with having field experiences, which is 32 field trips for our students and three diverse business visits and a lunch program. Also, to be able to have, you know, continue to have 18 quarterly lunches for our business advisory boards, which are so important to be able to identify what we need in their next employee, to be able to help us with defined curriculums. Also, create 32 business panels for our students, and then also have future fair hiring events, which is going to be six job fairs that have local for our students to experience. I know many of you have been through that process. And then also have signing days at every one of our schools. And that will be a little bit over $140,000. And then for the remaining 150, which is around $9,200, being able to expand partnerships for family and community engagement. And we want to get our families involved, educate them to help them with their students, and also get our community involved so they can be advocates for this particular initiative. There's been so many students being impacted for exposure, for having, you know, thousands of students being served to be able to attend field trips, thousands of, you know, students to be a part of the business panels, and this is a beautiful partnership. And I know historically, we used for 10 schools, around $60,000 for 10 schools, and expanding this to more than 30 schools just allows us to continue to support this initiative. As you know, the Tallahassee is really moving aggressive and put $5 billion toward workforce development. This continues to merge with this initiative and be able to allow students to continue to have a, an opportunity to stay in the Tampa region and have and earn a livable wage for them and their families. Mr. Brooks, anything would you like to add? Okay, sir. So at this time, a recommendation has been amended to $150,000 for workforce development dollars.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve item C 1102. I have a motion by Member Washington, and I have a second by Member Gray. Member Gray, Member Vaughn, and I pulled this item. We'll go ahead and start with Member Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And really, the big thanks goes to Scott Brooks and Yvonne Frye. You have transformed the workforce in a single, with a single bound. You know, we are reminded that vocational tech education is not like it was during Earl Leonard, bless his heart. We, you know, I taught during those days, and it's so sophisticated now. And when we look at Plant City and the modernization of farm equipment and the technology that goes on, and when we look at East Bay where there's a waiting line to take welding classes, when we know now that parents are absolutely choosing schools based on what particular vocational teacher, that they're, they're actually choosing schools because of vocational tech. So the rewards that the children get are not only the hope that they will make a stable and secure income, but just the hope that they will have a career that not only matches what they enjoy doing, but what they can sustain for their lifetime. And I think that's, you know, preparing students for life. What I, all I want to say is the sustainability, because we don't, we don't want to end this relationship. Superintendent Davis, is there a comment that you can provide? I looked at the contract, but the sustainability, is that built in, or are we talking year by year?
Right now, the contract goes to the end of the '23, '24 school year, and it has the option to renew for additional three years after that particular period. You know, we continue, this has been there since 2015. So, you know, from my side, I don't see any reason why we don't move forward and continue this relationship. It's only going to get stronger every single day.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that. So without further ado, I welcome, I can't, you know, wait to hear the remarks from our other fellow school board members. Thank you, Ms. Frye, Scott Brooks, and I'm sure there is a huge team also I need to thank, but I don't have their names, so I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Gray. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. I appreciate, oh, do you have to say, do you want me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to, I think it goes to December 2023. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the work and the partnership. I know that I've heard a lot of great things. I haven't been able to be on a field trip yet, but I've heard a lot of great things. But just like any other contract and financial obligations, I have questions about this one. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused about, and even looking at it, I was confused about the terms of the contract. You're saying if we approve this tonight, it will be renewed for one year with an option to go for three years, but will that option be brought before the board before it auto-renews or continues?
Through the chair, I always bring a contract to the board for review and for approval. So this goes to December 2023. It has an option to have a three-year extension, but I'll bring it to the board for further discussion and further review.
So if this gets approved tonight, it's one year with the option, and it will come back before us before any three-year renewal continuation?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. Same with the other contracts. There are other contracts that had multi-years, and we brought it to the board because we just thought it was important for us. In this process, we'll bring it back to the board to make certain that we're comfortable and continue to talk about the relationship.
Okay, and then, so, you know, I see here that it's more than doubling, and from what I'm understanding, that's because it's expanding to more schools from your opening comments. I want to make sure that we're clarifying the fees going up to, you know, not quite triple, but double. And then the other questions that I have is I, I would have liked to see a little more breakdown on the budget, like when we talk about the amount that we're budgeting for the panels. You said that there were 32 panels. You know, I think it was $25,000, which I think comes to about 800 each. And I would just like to understand, like, when we're paying for those panels, is that the people who are, who are on the panels, I think that's usually people who are donating their time? So is that for the venue, you know, where those fees go for? Normally, when we have any kind of MOUs or we have any kind of contracts, I really get to see the breakdown and understanding when we're lumping money into different categories of how that breaks down. So I understand as well how much these events cost and how much the investment is, you know, versus, you know, how many of our students get employment. So I was hoping to see definitely more detail on this so I could understand each expense a little bit more. So if we could get that information of how that works, I would appreciate that. And then I was just wondering if we had, you know, some kind of data, you know, I always like to ask for data when we're talking about any kind of contracts and, and what that looks like on, you know, how many of our students are getting those jobs, and what does that look like after each career fair? Do we have that data? I would love to see that with an MOU when we're talking about a financial, you know, obligation that might at some point be multi-year, and we're doubling it, and we're talking about funds. I would love to know the impact that that has if we're talking about, you know, impacts on our students, and what fields are they getting hired in? I mean, we're talking about welding, but, you know, are we bringing them to places where they're learning that skill trade? And if so, you know, what does that look like? Because we talk a lot about prioritizing which careers we're going to invest in, and what are some of the higher fields that, you know, in the local area, we want to prioritize as we do workforce development. This is a great opportunity to capture some of that data and find out what our students are interested in, what they're being placed in. So I was disappointed not to see some of that as well. Is that going to be available to be provided to us?
Through the chair, I think moving forward, one of the biggest things is, is that we want to be able to capture it. I mean, while we have a, you know, an opportunity in, when students interview and go to these fairs at the end of the school year, some of them aren't hired really until June or July as they transition out, but we can acknowledge and identify how many students at that particular fair may have offers as they leave, and at the same token, being able to capture what, you know, what kind of scope or job they'll be taking on. For example, Stingray Chevrolet continues to be one of our partners. They do a lot of interaction with finances, with sales, with marketing, with, you know, part warehouse, whatever it may be, but we can really track and identify where those individuals not only get offered, but what subset they go into, into their entry roles, and be able to capture that, to be able to send that back. And I think that we're trying to work through that with Future Career Academies to, to make sure we have analytics to be able to show the overall impact within our school district, in our students.
And I appreciate that. In my last two seconds, I'd also like to know with using the funding source that we do, how that's going to affect funding sources in our partnership with Career Source as well. So I'd like to understand.
Through the chair, to my understanding, there's no impact to Career Source. They continue to be, you know, a really good partner of our work, and will continue to make certain that we continue to partner with them, offer internships and positions and jobs, and summer jobs during the school year jobs for our students, but it doesn't impact our commitment to them. Mr. Brooks, anything?
Thank you. I'll get back in the queue.
Thank you, Member Vaughn.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that I've been fortunate to do is attend some of the Career Academies, both their business panels and their business advisory boards. And one of the things I'm very proud of our community and our schools for doing is that And one of the things I'm very proud of our community and our schools for doing is that they are not just showing up and educating our students, but they're educating our entire community. And they're inviting the communities around all of our schools to be directly participating and actively engaging in our schools, which is something I think that as a board, we all agree on, has been successful for Hillsborough County. And so I'm very thankful that they have done that. I'm also very thankful that I've watched over the last couple months, the bringing in of Career Source, bringing in Florida Trade Academy to be an active participant with the process. I think that has been a positive partnership, not only with Hillsborough County, but then also with Future Career Academy, being invited to the same business advisory panels and being invited to the business advisory boards along with other companies and businesses, therefore all being here for the focus of the students. And so I sincerely appreciate that. I'm also excited to see, and I've been excited to have other seniors that I've spoken to in a few different high schools recently, they're excited about these field trips. At the end of the day, they know their bubble, right? They know what mom and dad do, they know what grandma and grandpa do, they know their neighbors, but they don't know everything. And so these field trips are an opportunity to show what's locally in our community, to give them opportunities. And so for that, I'm also very grateful of something that we are doing and building and showing our students a diversity amongst them, that they have options that they may not have thought of. I recently, yesterday, spoke with a young lady that grew up where her mother's education was vital and very important to her. She worked very hard for her degree. She earned her master's degree. The daughter did extremely well in school, AP honors classes, went to Riverview High School, excelled in school. But once she was out of school, she didn't feel that she had the same opportunities as her mom. She said, "My mom wants me to go to college, but that's not what I want to do." And so because of Future Career Academy and what they showed her, she is now doing something in the trade industry, and she's thankful to be shown that opportunity. So for that, I'm very grateful. Thank you again.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Combs. No question, this is an important program and has great impact for our students, and it's, I'm glad you brought this to continue it tonight. I'm also glad that you're very sensitive to the general fund spending, especially at this time, and that you've made this adjustment. Though I don't want to get in the habit of these quick
I know. I apologize.
But I appreciate it nonetheless. I will say, you know, my concern is around some pieces of the MOU, and specifically in Article 2 around the renewal, because the way it is written is that it's written as it does renew automatically. And, you know, I know all of us on this board have really addressed and thought and been very clear that we're not comfortable with auto-renew. And I know you addressed Member Vaughn's concerns also around the renewal by saying you would bring it back to the board. But I would, at this time, like to move to amend the motion and strike out the second sentence where it says this MOU shall be extended for a period of three years, because that does not really, that really tells me that this auto-renews. And so, you know, I would, I would like it to state the MOU shall become effective January 9, 2022, and, well, actually, that needs to be, should say 23.
Yep, that's right.
I'm sorry. It should say January 9. So I want to strike that and correct that as well, enforce up to, including December 23, 2023. So should I repeat that, Mr. Porter?
Yeah, just so that, and if the superintendent can indicate that he's, that's an acceptable part of his recommendation, and he understands what your intention is.
So I move to amend the motion and strike out January 9, 2022, and replace it with January 9, 2023. Actually, I don't even know if that's the correct date. And then strike out the second sentence. So that way, it basically will say this MOU is in effect for one year, and then you'd have to bring it back to the board with any changes or expansions.
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. The question, to the point, should it go to January the 10th?
Yes, sorry. Yes.
No, I'm just, no, 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 I mean, I'm even asking from January the 10th, 2023 to January the 10th, 2024. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it probably should. Yes, I'm sorry. So that, that would be a strikeout and a correction and update.
Yes, ma'am.
And if I could suggest, I mean, it's very unusual to try to modify a contract at the dais when there hasn't been an opportunity to sort of reflect on it and study it. So what I would recommend is, I think you're
Pretty minor.
I understand. And so what I'm going to suggest is, instead of trying to wordsmith it tonight, if you could make your intent clear, Member Hahn, and then the superintendent can revise it, and that will be an acceptable way of proceeding if you have a majority that agrees with you. So I think instead of getting into specific words, if you can just state what you want, and the contract can be revised, and that will be what's adopted tonight.
Right. But, so, but, so when I vote tonight, though, I'm voting on this MOU.
No, you would be voting on the amended language.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it's just, I, I want to make sure, as long as the intent is clear, any kind of wordsmithing would be considered a Scrivener's error and would not have
Yeah, I think getting the dates correct, though, because tonight is not 2022.
Okay.
You know, and then, you know, again, removing the auto, the automatic renewal and striking that sentence.
If that's acceptable to the superintendent, does that change your recommendation?
It does not change your recommendation. It's acceptable, and it will be completed maybe this evening or first thing in the morning and submitted to the board.
Okay. So I think procedurally, what Member Hahn has done is made a motion to amend. That requires a second, and then the board needs to vote on that, Madam Chair. So, okay, so that's been seconded by Member Vaughn. So you would need to vote on the amendment. Do all the board members?
Well, let's go ahead and clear the board. And then what we'll be doing is, right now, we're going to be voting for the amended comments of January 2023 to January 2024 with
No automatic renewal.
With no automatic renewal. So if you would like that, you will vote yes. If you're not in favor of that, you'll vote no. So please
I'm sorry, did you say December 23 of '24? That would not, no.
Through the chair, I would take it through, I was going to move it from January the 10th, 2023 to January 10th, 2024. Just make that calendar year.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
One calendar year. Thank you. She said December, so I was confused.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, great. Okay, so we're all clear now. We're going to vote from January to 2023 to January 2024 without an automatic renewal. So you'll be voting yes if you support that, and no if you'd like to keep it the way it is. Okay, and that passes unanimously.
So now, the discussion should continue with the understanding that those are the new dates, and there's no automatic renewal, and the rest of the contract remains the same as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you. I appreciate that and your consideration, agreeing to that, Mr. Superintendent. You know, I only have a few seconds left, and I'll get back in the queue. I, some of the, you know, some of my concerns are around some of the lack of detail, especially around Article 3, and the fact that I've not seen any student impact data. I think the qualitative data is great. I've been to the fairs, too, and I've seen that, but having some quantitative data moving forward is very important to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Hahn? I think next is Member Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few comments to make. First of all, Mr. Brooks, I want to thank you and Ms. Frye. I've been, I've been around for a long time, now 45 years with the school board, with the school system itself. During this time, you have taken this to another level for career opportunities for students, and I think that's very important for people to understand that, because you give me students another outlet in life to be successful and be a productive citizen in society. So I want to thank you all for all of what you have done so far, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I, too, have a concern. So this contract has been, we've been working with them since 2015, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And I haven't seen any qualitative data, quantitative, right. So I know, working with other agencies, that in order to get a contract renewed, you know, we have to see how, you know, we have to have the data to measure success of the program, you know, not just a renewal. You know, what are the demographics of the students? What is the retention of jobs? The employment success? The success of the students in Hillsborough County schools? What are other funding sources beyond us, you know, to provide that for us? You know, do we have a blueprint of past successes? You know, the number of students possibly maintained or they're maintaining, you know, employment between now, 2015 and now? Do we have that information?
Through the chair, I don't know if we have all that information, but I can work with FCA to determine some parameters and also some guidelines to be able to seek to capture it. And the biggest thing we want to do is be able to figure out how many students have journeyed, you know, we have thousands of students going on field trips, thousands of students going to the business panels to be able to determine how many of those have actual offers, and what's the stability of those students staying within those organizations and journeying up. So definitely, I can take those, that information back to FCA and look and see if they can create measures to be able to capture it. And that's just the willingness of our, of our business partners. And I know that these business partners being a part of the business panels, I'm sure they want to give us feedback about how well we're doing, not only to help them hire individuals, but what we're doing collectively to keep those individuals retained. The retention of the jobs is going to be solely on that provider. It's like us, I own, I own how we retain our staff, such as that provider, how they retain, but more importantly, looking, I would say, how well that individual progresses within that organization and see that impact.
Well, you know, because also it'll provide information to them for next year as to what we're looking for in a student to go into the business world, or what they're, even what their employers are looking for.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, would help. What is the, what is the relationship with Junior Achievement as well?
Junior Achievement, they do a really good job with us, and for 5th grade and 8th grade, accessibility to our students at Finance Park, and also being able to get our students engaged in that. So Junior Achieve does also a partner with 3DE. So their 3DE, to be able to bring our students for problems of practice and being exposed to entrepreneurships in four of our schools now, they continue to be a strong partner. So this only continues to strengthen that work, to be able to identify agencies collectively, to be in front of our children, and have that opportunity for internships, externships, apprenticeships within our school district.
Right. So I agree with my, with my board members, you know, that we do need a little bit more data, you know. When you go to renew anything, you know, you have to provide data, you know, to solidify the reason for renewal.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would appreciate that information as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Member Perez. And I just want to say, probably for me, the most important data is that 70% of our students don't go to college. That is really important. Only 30% of students actually go to college. That means 70% of our students are sitting in the classroom, and once they graduate, we just don't know what happens. I mean, the other day, and I was driving on Dale Mabry, and I saw this young girl kind of come out of the woods, and she looked very young, and she looked like there was something wrong with her. And I thought to myself, the first thing I thought about is, where did we go wrong? Like, where did we miss that opportunity? So for me, I've had the opportunity, I've been, this is probably one of the things that drives me as a board member, is when I met Yvonne Frye, and I started going to the Future Career Academy. I went to all the events, you know. In the very beginning, I went to the field trips. I was in the bus. I was with the students. I saw them. And so some of the things that, you know, we're going from eight high schools to 32 high schools, career centers, technical centers. I sat there a few weeks ago when I saw so many students saying, "What time? How can I sign up?" I've been involved, like some of the members here, in the business panels, and being able to connect with these seniors. You're talking about, for the first time, 9,000 of our high school seniors are able to learn about resume writing, soft skills, things that our employers are looking for. On top of that, 5,500 students had business panels, and where I was one of the business panel individuals, where you had people from our community who want to hire these people. This is the first time where businesses are looking for students as much as the students are looking for jobs. And you see those kids engaging in those business panels. And then on top of that, you're going to have 1,800 students be able to be, experience three completely different jobs, from warehouse to going to the bank, to realizing, I think more and more people are realizing, college is not for everyone. It's really about the skills. It's about giving kids hope. You see kids right now who are sitting there in their senior year, and guess what? Maybe they didn't get into FSU. Maybe they didn't get into UCF. And they are scared, and they have fear, and they need hope, and they need to know that there are jobs and opportunities for them to have a better life. And it doesn't always include going to college. And this is honestly such, we spend, this is a $4 billion industry, and you're talking about 150,000 impacting thousands and thousands of our seniors. So without a question, I fully support this. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. I, you know, I appreciate the passion behind workforce development, and I don't think any board member doesn't see the value in that. I just think we're trying to make sure that we have a very clear MOU and a partnership that's giving us and providing us clear data, and making sure that we're making the best business decisions. Some of the other questions that I have, and I would have loved to see attached with this, and when I'm asking for information, if we don't get it, at least now, I would like it before this comes for renewal, before the next time, like when this comes and we're going to have the discussion, these are the things that I would like with it. You mentioned, when you kind of revised this, that there was originally other funds that were coming out of general fund, that you're going to be looking for opportunities without taking it out of the general fund of fund. What does that look like? And is that, those funds are going to come before the board as a separate MOU, or what is that going to look like for the additional funding that you're looking for? Are board members going to have input on that, or what is that going to look like?
Yes, ma'am. When we, sorry, I was writing it down. We would definitely bring that information
Could you pause my time? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
So there was other personnel ask and other community engagement ask in this original document for, presented to the board. So as we get to that point, and we are going to, one of the asks from the board members is to try to find additional funding, and I don't disagree with that process, especially in the state that we're currently in. So as we go and seek additional funding, whether it be grant funding, federal funding to be able to support this initiative, we'll bring it back individually in general one-on-ones and unpack what this original, you know, original attachment B identified as expenditures, and get feedback from the board, and talk about what that relationship looks like further between the school board and FCA. And if there's any adjustment in that process, working with FCA to identify it and be able to make adjustments that make sense for our organization.
So it won't come before the board as a whole, you'll talk to us individually, is what you're saying, if you find alternative funding?
No, ma'am. Through the chair, we'll do individual one-on-ones, as always.
Gotcha.
And that agenda item will come to the board as an amendment to this original contract.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that'll be, just to be transparent in our process.
The other thing I would love is, when we have the MOU, aside from more clarity in the MOU itself, is I would love to see some of the curriculum as part of this, as even just an outline what our students are learning, what's going into the school, you know, even a lesson plan as part of a curriculum, some idea of what the curriculum looks like when we're talking about this, and when this is, you know, attached to a contract, because you're going into the schools and teaching our students lessons and curriculum. I would love to be able to understand what that looks like and what is encapsulated in that. So I would love to have that piece along with it. And then finally, I know we said we're expanding this to other schools, but I don't see a list here anywhere in there that talks about which other schools this is going to go to or has a plan that outlines. It's in there?
Through the chair, it's every high school.
Every high school. Okay. So that helps with that piece, then. And those are the three points that I have and questions regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Rendon?
Yeah, so I do want to thank Superintendent for being conscious, aware of our general revenue funds, and making sure that our teachers are a priority at this point. I mean, with the engagement we are at right now with our teachers, we have to make sure that they understand that we are cognitive of how we're spending our money. And so I thank you so much for taking that in consideration. I also do agree with other board members that quantitative data is very good and very important, and I think that that ask is more than acceptable in looking at it. I also, though, want to remind from some of my education on this program that I asked the question was, although it was started in 2017, at that point in time, it was one school. And it was right in the 2019, 2020 that we expanded it into And it was right in the 2019, 2020 that we expanded it into nine schools, I believe, or was it six? Either way, six or nine schools, we ran right into COVID for two years. And so this is really, to my understanding and my knowledge from asking the questions, the first time we've been able to implement it in all high schools, all of our career centers, et cetera. So I think that's why we are lacking more of the data based upon circumstances. However, I would agree with Member Vaughn that when we come back in a year, and even before, I'd love to see what's happening over the summer, where we were at with our job fairs, one full year. What does that look like so we can compare it in year number two, where we have all of our schools? I think it is a priority to really know exactly the impact that it's making. So thank you so much for that.
I agree.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Gray?
Yeah, I think in the spirit of contractual language, and on December 3rd, I actually wrote Superintendent Davis a note about, you know, is this contract, who has put this contract together? Jeff Gibson. I also think, now that Member Han brought it up with some of the wording, it wouldn't hurt, and Jeff, no, you know, I think the world of you, but it wouldn't hurt Superintendent Davis to probably have a labor attorney or another attorney to look at this and tighten it up a little bit. And this is only to safeguard this from all the questions and doubts that this board may have now or in the future. I don't think it would be a bad idea to have another attorney eye, so to speak, set eyes. And, you know, maybe refresh it, not only wordsmith it, but also tighten it up a little bit. I'm just giving that suggestion because I know there's a lot of legalese that we could see, and maybe that would tighten that, the contractual language a little bit more to protect this from, I want it to continue, I want it to expand. I think we all do. And the comments were, you know, very well received. So that's my suggestion, and we can talk again on it later on.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Han?
Thank you, Chair Combs. I guess for me, the lang, the legal language isn't the issue, it's the lack of detail. So for example, under Article Five, record keeping requirements, FCA will keep adequate records and supporting documentation. That really needs to be spelled out. What is our expectation? Because that's going to help them collect the data on what we want to see. You know, for me, I'd love to see some minority and equity data. I know that's probably important to Member Washington, to Member Perez as well. They're very laser focused on the impact in those communities. That's just an example. So just, you know, how does it correlate with our graduation data? I agree with Member Combs, you know, very important when we have 70% of our students who are not going to college. However, you know, obviously, this is one piece of what supports the, those 70% of those students, but obviously, the robust courses, CTE courses and certifications is what gets them employed. Those soft skills are the other piece. I think for me, some of the other details that I want to see are around Article Three, where we have the roles and responsibilities of the school district. I don't know why that's under compensation. Seems like an odd place. Roles and responsibilities are usually a standalone article in MOUs and are very detailed in the expectations. This is about six bullet points that aren't even a sentence long each. So for me, it's the detail, and I'm happy to go through it with you and really, I know I only have another minute and a half, but it's, and the budget. You gave a budget similar to the one that was attached to the original item, that is just really line item. And we need details on, on those items as well, especially if it's going to be expanded, on what the expenses are for those types of events. Just again, nobody is saying that we don't want to see it, well, at least I'm not saying I don't want to see it to continue or even expand. But doing our due diligence around the financial aspect of it is really important, especially, you know, we aren't a financial crisis, we are struggling to pay our teachers. We had, how many, 45 families here tonight talking about how the boundary is going to impact them? And one of the reasons we're doing a lot of this is the financial impact to the district. So I think the more detail we can get around our spending, whether it's general fund or whether it's coming out of, you know, the workforce, is really important as we begin to build, you know, we rebuild and continue to build trust and transparency with our families and our community. So, but again, thank you for being sensitive to the financial piece of this and revising it. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Han. Please vote when your lights appear. Oh, did we have some more comments? Oh, Superintendent Davis, do you have some more comments?
Yes, ma'am. And I agree. I'll sit down with whomever, and I agree, we can be, expand details. I will, on my follow-up, provide details on all the expenditures and what they look like, and then provide some feedback about what some of these little rules will be in an article, as Dr. Han mentioned, to be able to show demographics, equity, stay rate, offer rate, those types of things. I do think it's about accountability and being able to make certain that we're using taxpayer dollars in an efficient manner. At the same token, I appreciate this board for your flexibility. As you know, I, we do not change items at that, this particular late time, but I thought it was necessary to do it in the sensitivity of where we are with our finances. So thank you for your adjustments.
Member Vaughn?
Thank you. I'll keep this really quick. Is it an option to maybe put this on our suspended agenda for data and updates, especially since there's a lot of changes to the MOU and keep circling back and getting information since we've had so many questions about this?
Through the chair, absolutely, we can put it on a suspended agenda because not only can we provide you with information about updates of the, of the initiative, but we can look at how many students sign up for field trips, how many students are engaged in panels, how many students are actually offered jobs earlier than other students in the job fair, and how many students are on the signing day. So we definitely can provide that as an expanded information for the board to show value. Yes, ma'am.
That's a great idea, Member Vaughn. Thank you. Yeah, I think that would be great. I think everybody is very interested in that. And I know, and I know Future Career Academy would be very proud to have that as well. So any other comments? Okay, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Okay, thank you so much. We will now move on to superintendent comments.
Yes, ma'am. First and foremost, as the, as the slides come up, we want to thank all of our constituents for coming out, not only last night and tonight to the boundary meetings, but also for here to be able to attend and provide your insight. But I want to let, make sure we're very clear that there has been no decisions made, and this is only the proposed draft recommendations that have been outlined by our vendor, who did this entire study and analysis for our school district. This is not an analysis that was conducted by staff, not an analysis that was conducted by any school board member, but more importantly, for us to engage in a corporation and a company to review all of the analytics, all the student stations, the financial impact, the travel distance from to and from school, the utilization of our school district, to make an informed decisions of moving forward to be able to strengthen our utilization in the educational experience for every one of our schools. So please, we appreciate your feedback. It is welcome. There is nothing set in stone in this process. We are welcoming every, all the feedback we get to that process. So we look forward to continued engagement, because we want to make certain that, as superintendent, that we get as much information as we can so that I can make a sound recommendation to the board and so that the board can make an informed decision as we get close to that process. And then, so tonight, it's about, you know, little short updates on our, where we are in celebrations, highlight consent agenda, and then go back to the boundary. But welcome back, everyone. You know, originally, you know, we all kind of, you know, struggled getting to that December the 23rd, so close to the holiday break to work, but the two week weeks were really refreshing. I hear that from everyone. So welcome back. I love to see the energy from everyone, to be able to get into our classrooms and educate our children, so we can do, continue to do some special things within this community. But celebrations, you know, Bloomingdale High School, the, I think it's the Rage and Bulls, had a chance to go to the, the band to London's New Year's Day Parade. I got a chance to even watch this on, on television as well. I believe it was on PBS, I'm not certain, but, you know, what an opportunity for our students to go and have active engagement and really demonstrate and listen, learn in, in London for, for the New Year's Day Parade to all of them. And also, we want to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day that's coming on the, on January the 16th. It'll be a really special day. We'll attend a breakfast, and also, we have a parade that I'll be able to attend as well with, with some of our board members and staff. But what a remarkable leader and continue to be champion for equity within our nation, and we'll continue to celebrate it within our organization. And at the same token, district highlights, we have Rogers Middle School that will attend a field trip at Georgia Tech in Atlanta to be able to, to have their tours and to get students excited about potential post-secondary opportunities. Also, East Bay High School going to the city of, going to Washington DC to be able to take tours. I think that's a really cool trip to be able to perform. Strawberry Crest is going to Walt Disney World to be able to, to attend initiatives connected to curriculum. Ben Hill is going to be able to, to a, you know, the Orange County Convention Center, and then also being able at Orange Grove to be able to compete in Orlando with our students. So, you know, once again, thank you to the board for allowing our students to be engaged outside of our community, to be able to build their rich experiences every day. And then also about fiscal responsibility to the budget analysis, you know, we've been very clear in, in this process, when we brought this vendor to our school district, we tied in that we knew that, that policy was 12 months, but in this experience, we may not be able had, this particular notion, not be able to follow policy due to the immediate impact and the time sensitivity of being able to potentially reboundary. So this wasn't something that we, this administration did in isolation, but being very transparent to the board in that process, and that was identified in our school board meeting. But this analysis, it was started in summer into the fall of 2022 in Phase One, which is all about being able to introduce the planning process, to be able to make certain that we shared all of the analytical data so they can make informed decisions to the vendor, and then really identify what the community thought their priorities were in this boundary analysis. And then swiftly moving to Phase Two of the scenario, because in the original timeline, this was going to end in December. And being able to bring the board, you know, a decision, but we felt like that process was openly rushed. So being able to slow this down, to have greater impact, greater community thought processed, for them to look at this problems of practice as a community, give feedback, and slow this down to the board and take it to the end of February, that way we have all of the review and analysis. And this is where we are today, is being able to get the feedback from scenarios. It is warranted, it is needed for us to make informed decisions, and then refine those scenarios to bring back to the board for my final recommendation. And this is not, you know, this is my recommendation to the board, and the board will make a final decision on that process, but also having multiple special meetings and workshops to listen, learn, to grow, to figure this out, to figure out what would be best for this overall organization. And, you know, the gallery walks, we appreciate the feedback, making a Q and A, an opportunity. And it's, you know, for us, we're capturing, you know, questions as community come in. They have an opportunity to write their questions down. Our staff reads the questions. We address global questions at scale. Any individual questions is, are those that we pull out and address in the back with our staff, but we want to be transparent in that process. And we still have, tonight we have meetings, and the entire week, we'll continue to have meetings, and then the workshop on the 31st of January, and then working through special called board meeting, and then also for potential vote and at the end of February. This could change, but this is currently where we are right now, and we'll continue to be sensitive in this process and make certain that we are helping students along the way. And anyone that wants to be involved, they can go to www.hcps bounding.org. We will upload the PowerPoint presentation this week. We'll continue to upload all of the breakdown of financial analytics that will be, that's sent to the board first midweek, and then transition to be uploaded to communicate an impact and have a better understanding of what the financial savings will be from a capital perspective, but at the same token, a general fund perspective as well. And I want to be very clear that no facilities will be surplus, which makes them available to any charter schools or any other entity. Those will be repurposed for district use at all times within our organization. So at that time, we appreciate it. Welcome back, everyone, and look forward to leading us through some, some very hard decisions and doing it with care and doing it with sensitivity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Davis. We will now go to board comments. Board members, we'll start with Member Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to wish everyone a happy new year and welcome back to starting the 2023 school year. And welcome back, Superintendent. I have a concern, Superintendent, and I'm going to start it off that way. You know, we've had a lot of families coming in from Cuba, you know, and a lot of families coming in from Venezuela and Nicaragua and, you know, families who do not understand the process here in Hillsborough County Schools and who do not speak fluent English, who have concerns. You know, they've been moved from their native land into an unknown. And now they're, now being put into the middle of another unknown of moving schools or, you know, into a conversation that they do not understand. So on December 23rd, I had a meeting with fourth graders and third graders who only spoke Spanish and were very anxious about their futures. And, you know, children shouldn't have to go into their Christmas holiday with this anxiety. And it was left to me to ease that anxiety going into the holiday. I have here close to 120 letters from students written on December 22nd to you. And I've been charged to give you these letters, if you could please.
Would love to have them.
About their anxiety and about their, their school and how they feel, and would like you to hear their voices. And I appreciate if you just give me some feedback.
Absolutely.
About that. But, you know, if you could, please take into consideration that some of our parents do not speak English and their children do not speak English as well. And maybe think about having a meeting specifically for these parents in Spanish or have a translator, but specifically for the Spanish-speaking population so that you can have a one-on-one with them. Because having in a large auditorium where it's just somebody translating for you and they cannot have their voice heard, they get lost in the shuffle. And, you know, so I've been charged with that to ask you to please take that into consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair, we, as you saw last night, we said it openly. The timeline's been out in front for this community. One thing we continue to leverage is our Twitter and Facebook account that's in Spanish that we initiated, you know, a year ago to leverage, to send that information out. And at the same token, being able to have interpreters at every one of these events. But openly, we'll, we'll look at our teams and determine what we can continue to offer. We want to make certain that everyone's comfort. We know that this is going to create angst for being able to move from one location to the next because they built relationships and families. And we're optimistic about, you know, those individuals transitioning to a potential another school to be able to build stronger relationships and then also to be embraced and accepted by our highly qualified skilled teachers, support staff and leaders as well. And the main thing we're trying to do is make certain that we reduce travel time, at the same token, being able to make certain that we do offer continued high-quality educational experiences. It's very difficult to, to, you know, provide ongoing experiences to schools that are under-enrolled. I mean, when you're talking about offerings, looking at a school that is at 95% utilization versus 47% utilization, there's inequities in master scheduling. We do have additional federal funding that we put in place, entitled funding, one funding we put in place, and state funding to be able to help with that process, but we just want our kids to have comprehensive, but we'll be sensitive to that, to our students that we serve and those who need us.
When, when you have students who have been traumatized or bringing trauma because of the travel that they have, the course that they've had to travel to get here to the United States, and now they're in an influx of where they're going to be, it's just, would help to settle them and have a one-on-one dialogue.
Yes, ma'am.
With that community especially. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Gray?
Yes, I just wanted to also recognize Black History Month is coming, and we're going to celebrate greatly with all types of activities. And maybe, Sheik, you're going to say a few things on that one, but also, we have the big Hapsey Brain Bowl coming. More details on that. Talking about anxiety, talking about stress, we partnered the city of Tampa Talking about anxiety, talking about stress, we partnered, the city of Tampa and John Cortes, the CEO, President of Tampa General, they had what is called a wellness revolution. So Humada and myself partnered with TGH and the city of Tampa, and we decided to have one in our, our schools through the Hillsborough Healthy School Committee. So long story short, the week of, of the 16th, January 16th, we're going to have, with the help of Pasa, Johnny Bush, Ken Hart, we're going to go ahead and get our principals, pay attention to our principals and our APs, who are greatly overworked and, as the teachers are also. And we're going to give them a lot of emotional and social relief type of ideas, practices such as yoga, such as biometric screening for the physicals, such as eating tips. And then we're having a wonderful talk from Dr. Wilson on the importance of staying fit mentally and physically. And so anyway, we're having that next week for the principals. And then the following week, we talk about teachers and their well-being and their emotional stability and their anxious anxiety, and we're all very familiar with that, and we have to recognize it, and it is very, very, very important to the well-being of our students. How they feel is how the students will do most, there's a lot of correlation there. So at any rate, we're going to have health fairs, fitness calendars, heart monitors for the students. We're going to introduce dance genas and, oh, there it is, it's right on the screen. Thanks, Pablo. Put it back on, Pablo, just in case I forget. So anyway, you know, this is a pretty big task for the entire staff to get involved with, but we're hoping not only to pay attention to the worker bees, but we're really hoping to gain, not only, I mean, the trust, but the, lessen the anxiety, the stress, and give them some real scientific tips to gain health and take a pause. I always like to say smell the roses because I am a gardener, but to really help them recognize that, yes, they're high achievers, they're type A personalities, but slow down and start getting healthy, think healthy. And we're hoping through the teachers as well and the students that our Race for Education, Van Air is standing there, don't you dare brag about your 5K and half marathon times. But the Race for Education is in April, and we're hoping to have a cumulative effect in every one of the board members. I'll probably give you a stopwatch to, to, you know, gain a little bit of excitement to do a 5K. So Shake, don't you shake your head. Anyway, we want to thank two, our Hillsborough Healthy Schools recognizes, Ms. Marshall, Deana Marshall, Tracy Schatzberg, but our Madison AP Principal, Antonio Codovi, brought his entire staff into wellness. He lost 100 pounds, but in so doing, he recreated the cafeteria foods, made him more healthy, the teacher's lounge, started yoga classes. Anyway, he, he really reconfigured the habits or the, you know, the way of work, so to speak, to a more appropriate, healthy culture that I think we all are trying to gain. So it's, it's always a work in progress, but I do identify with every one of the board members in knowing that the mental health of our employees and staff is, and our students and teachers, of course, is the number one concern. So at any rate, I look forward to, hopefully, we all get involved next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Combs. Well, first, Happy New Year to everybody. I know it's been a busy end of the year, and it's a very busy beginning of the year, and it's going to continue to be that way with the boundary changes, as we heard tonight. So many families concerned, so many implications for our families across this entire district. I am really hoping that a lot of families attend tomorrow night's meeting at Plant High School and Lato High School. I'm excited to talk with families tomorrow night. I will be at Plant High School. I'll be joined by the superintendent will be there, so thank you for that. And staff, Member Gray will be there. I'm sure other members will be there, and it'll be a really good opportunity to hear from, from our families. And I just want to thank you for changing the format for these meetings to include an opportunity for questions. You know, I think that's really an important piece to all of this. Actually, it's the most important piece is to get our community input. There's no way that the seven of us, along with the superintendent and the staff, can anticipate every question, every concern, and that is why this is so important to get their input. Scenario one, two, and three are starting points. I would imagine the superintendent and his staff will work to use the input, use what they understand about our community to personalize these scenarios, come up with some type of consensus around a final scenario that he will then present to the school board to discuss and consider. So, you know, these, these opportunities to meet and talk with the community, I wish there were more of them. I wish there were, you know, two or three rounds of this built into the process because I'm sure even after this first round of face-to-face meetings, there's going to be many, many more questions that continue to come up. And though I know we offer many opportunities through the portal, through email, through phone calls, through all of us having personal meetings and coffees and continuing conversations, you know, they, they really do want to have an opportunity to sit amongst their peers and ask questions and listen and learn in those situations and have the superintendent's ear. And given that, you know, you're going to be looking at all these scenarios and then developing a final one. And so, you know, I just want to encourage people to come tomorrow night to Plant High School, to Lato High School, and as we continue through the rest of the week, I know all of us want to touch, want to have that touch point with our constituents, along with the staff, the superintendent. So thank you so much, and again, Happy New Year, and everyone have a nice evening.
Thank you, Member Hahn. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. First, yep, to echo all my fellow board members, welcome back. Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a chance on break to recharge because we have a, we have a heavy year coming before us. One, I wanted to make sure everyone heard about the teacher at the airport. That was a news story that helped identify luggage, who was in my district, working at Freedom High School, and I got her permission to share the story. She does have some feedback for us that I'm going to meet with her and hear about. This is another thing, I know that we finalized the calendar on winter break next year to be similar to this year, but I've had such a tremendous amount of feedback that it was almost impossible for our staff to get ready for what they needed to. Most of the people that I know, including teachers at my son's school, had to take their own paid day off to take care of some things, to kind of get ready for whatever holiday they celebrate. And I know that we're kind of in a hard place between that, and we rely on committee, but I would just ask if we could send out a survey to our employees and maybe even to our parents to get feedback about, for them, whether they would rather take tests after they come break, after from break, if that's an option. I've had so much negative feedback and anxiety about this. I would just love to get some feedback from the people in our community as well, aside from, not to diminish the work of the committee, but just to see if it's something we want to look at again and if it's really the best choice, because they continually compare us to other school districts that don't make that decision, and it's placed a lot of anxiety. And if the majority of people like it that way, then I say we keep it. But, you know, if the people who are in our school district and our customers and our employees would rather us change it, I would just like to have another conversation about it. So I would just like to ask that. Also, I'm very excited about MLK Day on, on Monday. The MLK Parade is my absolute favorite parade. I'm super excited. We have a group going this year, and we're going to have a float. It's very long, so be prepared. It's probably one of the longest routes, but I'm really excited about that. You know, and finally, I do want to address boundaries. We had, you know, families here tonight. I find it frustrating that they feel like they don't understand that the fact that we're talking about financially is driving this, that they don't have any answers about the finances. I've heard that repeatedly talked about over and over again. If this is what's driving this, can we please have some data about what that looks like? And I think that absolutely we should have that when we're having this discussion, and people should be able to understand the impact. I'm not sure as a board member, I fully understand it or I've had access to that information. In fact, I feel like I haven't had a lot of information in general to talk to constituents with and give them answers, and I have to continually say, we'll wait till our workshop, we'll talk about it at our workshop. Hopefully, we'll have some answers at our workshop. So I feel frustrated with the lack of details that I have as a board member who's going to help make the decision for my community, so I can only imagine how frustrated the community feels. And again, you know, when I started this process and I approved using a management company over, you know, half a million dollars, I've said from the moment we started discussing this, that the very number one priority for me was making sure that we're doing this carefully with socio-economic and racial diversity being weaved. This is our opportunity to make sure that we're building strong diverse schools. And on my last meeting, as you well know, Superintendent Davis, the consulting company basically told me that wasn't a priority, and we hear people from the community, especially our marginalize communities, repeatedly talking about how that should be a priority, and this is our opportunity. We haven't redistrict through the red line days, and to have our consulting company, who from day one, I spent a huge amount of time talking about that being a priority, to say that that wasn't a priority for me or from any of the board members, makes me very distrustful of the company, and you know that I feel that way. And I'm going to be very clear and transparent. I'm glad I have an opportunity to share it with my fellow board members because we haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk about it. And I am going to be clear with the public about that, so I want to prepare my fellow board members. I'll make sure I'm speaking as myself, but I'm going to be clear and open and honest about my concerns about this process. Because again, this is our opportunity to make sure our schools are diverse and not to segregate them more based on socio-economic and racial divides, because we all know thriving healthy schools have diversity in them. And again, we're hearing that from our community, and we're hearing it all over. So I want to go on record for that. I know we'll have more conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last night, we had a meeting over at Milton High School, and we had quite a few people in attendance, and they had a chance, some of them had a chance to express their feelings. We got a long ways to go, people. You know, at the end of the day, we got a long ways to go and a, and a hard road, because there are quite a few people don't understand, and I understand because my constituents last night, I got a few comments from them, they didn't, they did not understand. So we, my, my, my main, my main concern is communications. We got to have good communications because that's what makes the tick, makes it go. And if we don't have good communications, then it's not going to be successful. So we got a long ways to go, and you know, hey, look, this is our first time doing it. You know, when you're doing something for the first time, you got to critique it and keep it going. We may have to do something else. We may have to go another round. I mean, whatever we have to do, we want to be here for the people so they know that we are transparent. Moving along, had a great time on December 23rd. I played Santa Claus. I was a skinny Santa Claus. I know, I didn't want to bring the pictures because I was too skinny. Some kid said, you don't have no big stomach like Santa Claus. So I went and got a pillow and put him on, in my suit. But we had a great time at Edison. We gave away a lot of toys. The kids were really excited. We gave away about 320-some gifts that day, which was very good. Also, on December 14th, my wife and I, we attended HB Plant Museum, the Christmas Scroll, which was very, very good. That was my first time, but I'm a member of the board now, so I, you know, I have to be there and participate. But it was really good. A lot of people came out. We had a great time. Moving on, on December 17th, we had a joy-giving parade and gift-giving at Milton High School. We gave away a lot, a lot of bicycles, toys, and whatever else we had with the Tony Dungeon Foundation and with the Re See You. We had a great time, and that's what we do. That's what we do as humans. We help people. We give the people. We want them to be happy, because there's more to life than just, just education. You know, you got to have a whole life around you in order to be successful. So I really enjoy, I always enjoy. Dr. Hahn, when you come over there, you read your books, and I enjoy that, because we're here to make people happy. It's all about being happy, because we are depressed many a times. So I truly enjoy these things, I mean, this Christmas, and hey, we got a, we got a job to do. We got a long ways, people. We got a tough task coming up, and we got to face it, because we faced tasks before with this board, and we succeeded. So we got a long ways to go and a hard road to go. So we, hey, we up for the fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Rendon?
Yeah, I want to take an opportunity to wish everyone a Happy New Year and wishing everyone well for 2023. I agree with our fellow board members that we've got a long way to go. We've had a lot of comments. And with that to be said, it was asked yesterday at Plant City High School, where I was at for a boundary review, that, you know, how do we know that, how do you know that we're getting your comments? And we are. We're getting them every single day when you go on the website, when you go and look at those things, when you go and ask those questions. We are getting those comments. We are taking them into consideration. We are analyzing them. So please continue to ask the questions. Please continue to bring comments. Please continue to ask the harder questions of us so that we can ask the harder questions of the district, so that we can bring the best plan possible for Hillsborough County, because it's the future of this county that's important. Last week, I had the opportunity, which I find to be a privilege, that I was in our Capitol last week for the first round of committee meetings. And I think it's vitally important that our public know that, you know, we here that sit on the dais, we are the ones that have to implement policy based upon statute that's passed into law by our government officials. And so please take into consideration that you have a voice with your legislative officials, your representatives, your senators. Let them know what's important to you in education. Let them know what's important to you in the state of Florida so that we here can do the best job possible, because they are passing the laws that directly impact you. And so I want to make sure that we all understand how important that role is as a community member, as a parent, as a child of an elderly parent, as a parent of a disabled child, as a parent of a student in our schools. Please keep in communication with your legislative officials. They are the ones that are directing impact the laws that impact your lives and that we then turn into policy that will directly impact every day. So I want to thank the superintendent, all of our teachers, all of our staff in Hillsborough County Schools. You guys are doing a phenomenal job, and we're excited to see what 2023 shows.
Thank you, Member Rendon. And in closing, I just want to thank, you know, our district would not be what it is without so many of our community partners and relationships. I want to thank, right before the holidays, the Brink Family Foundation, that has been supporting Town and Country, you know, for 15 years. They provided 15 schools, each principal a $5,000 check to use at their discretion, which for a teacher or a principal is amazing. You know, I heard teachers talking about getting reading nooks or doing incentives for teachers. We'd love for it to be to every school, but I just want to thank the Brink Family Foundation for always supporting our Town and Country schools. Also, the Rotary Club. Last week, I was able to go, the flags for Hillsborough Heroes, and the Rotary Club invited us. That's another wonderful organization that does so much for our community and supports so many community members, so I want to thank them for that. And then finally, or a couple more things, with the boundary meetings, you know, this is going to be a very challenging year, and it's going to be very hard. And I know I've been out there in subdivisions and in areas, talking to people, and the idea of closing schools is really scary to us, but we have to remember in Pinellas County, they closed 10 schools in 2008. Pasco County, they're closing schools. Polk County, they're closing schools in the area, not closing, repurposing schools. But when you have, you know, schools around the area that are all, all, you know, very below what they should have, and they should have hundreds of more students, and they're in the neighboring area, how is that sustainable long-term when we can't provide raises, when we're talking about busing kids, that we can't provide transportation somewhere? So we have to look at the sustainability, that it's sad when you have to close a school, but if there's a school a mile away that's also under capacity, we have to look at the big picture of that as well. So these are hard choices to make. It's not that we're giving up in a community, it's that people are, people are getting older in communities, they're choosing charter schools, they're choosing private schools, they're homeschooling, or they're just moving out of that area, and that's, that's the reality, and that's something that we have to look at. And then finally, as we prepare for next week, Superintendent Davis, we do have a workshop looking at the policies and some of the things that the Department of Education is asking. You know, there's so many laws. You know, there's so many laws and there's so many things that are changing and we talk about data and specifics. So I'd like for you, you know, to prepare for next week, to give us a legal analysis. I want you to ask the departments, certain departments, you know, from the fiscal to public records, to the charter school, to government affairs, you know, how they feel about not having, you know, around-the-clock support at the district office. What is the need there? To do a legal analysis, some type of survey or some type of input from your, from your departments, from your cabinet to see, because there are so many things happening. For me, it concerns me when there's a letter and we're still waiting to respond to the letter and we're still waiting to respond to the policy. And I'm hearing from people throughout the cabinet that are saying, things are bottlenecked sometimes and we're not being so efficient. It, I'm not saying that what we have isn't great. What I'm saying is that we need to have something that's accessible at all times because so many laws and so many things are occurring and with the policies, we want to make sure that we're abiding by the law, that we're following by the law, that we, if we have questions, we're able to ask them. So I would just like to, for you, instead of talking about a motion, for you to tell me to survey some of your departments to see, have a little bit of a legal analysis, how they feel, do they feel like they need more support with, you know, something of that nature. Superintendent Davis, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, the Chair. One thing I'll say is that, you know, knowing that we have so much on our plates, that recent, had a recent conversation with our cabinet about what that support looks like within our organization. Of course, having continuous accessibility to legal allows our staff to do their job better because we have so much coming from new legislation. I will say that Mr. Gibson has been awesome and accessible. Also, Mr. Porter's been really accessible in this process. I also asked Mr. Gibson recently before break is to ask him, can he kind of find a home here and find a location where he can be here as much as he can so our staff can turn to it? Because we do have a lot of legislation in front of us to be able to address. Hats off during break that Mr. Porter and Mr. Gibson also reached out to Department of Education over the last week during, to have conversations about that letter so we'll be able to share more of that information for next week.
Okay, so you'll be able to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Survey a little bit more?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.